Good evening. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting of April 27, 2023. If everyone would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to do the roll call. Mr. Phil Nemisak?
Present.
Mr. Anthony Jacoby?
Present.
Jim Bonano's here. Mr. Cunningham is not present. Louis Campana?
Present.
Let's see, so just so everyone knows, our new planner in the town is Lucas Herbert. Welcome. And with you, is that applause? A little more. And with you is, just so everyone knows who Noel is.
Noel Wolfson, our legal counsel.
The town's.
Right, we're consulting land use counsel for the town.
Has always been consulting for the town, not just in the past also. Got it. Cool. Good. So then, we're going to just take care of some housekeeping, and that is minutes. Phil, do you have any comments?
I have submitted the meetings, the minutes of the, or I'm sorry, the revisions to the minutes of the February 23, 2023 Planning Board Meeting, I guess probably just after our last meeting, but I have not yet had the ability to, the opportunity to finish reviewing the March 23.
So we will just approve the minutes of the first, and we'll hold on the second until you've had a chance to review.
Yep.
So then I make a motion to approve the minutes from February 23, 2023.
Yep.
Planning Board Meeting, subject to Mr. Nemisak's comments. It's.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, so on the agenda tonight, we have one, two, we have four applications. One application that's been adjourned to May is the Tuckahoe Avenue subdivision, but the ones we are going to discuss is Ray Place, which is a previous application, Beach Street, which we are going, obviously, to talk about, and then two new applications. One is the Pottery Born and 670 White Plains Road, and the second is Sephora, same location. Good. So first application is Ray Place, Application 22-47, 5 Ray Place, and if I'm correct, this is an open public hearing. Got it.
Hello, Board members, and Lucas, welcome onboard. And you got a great planner here. I've known him since I got started in planning many, many years ago, working at the county. The amount of stuff that he's brought towards bringing bikes throughout the county and just, you know, being there for such a long time. Big shoes to fill, but great planner, great choice, so.
Thank you.
So we're here to present, obviously, on 5 Ray Place. We have come back, at the last session, you kept the public hearing open. I think that there was one remaining point. You asked questions about the transformer being placed on the property. So just going to quickly go through the details, just run through. It's an 18-part, 18-apartment unit with nine 1-bedroom units, nine 2-bedroom units, 31 parking spaces. It's an all-electric building. The original approvals were for a 21-unit building with a variance for two spaces, but the new unit count, because it's less, only requires 31 and 1/2 spaces. And we did come in with some project changes. They have changed over time because we've gone to the ARB and through discussions with this board. So we have requested a change of the mansard roof material from metal shingle to a natural slate material. We previously requested the elimination and reduction of decorative railings on the windows. You've decided that you do not want to see that, so we have eliminated that. We're no longer seeking that change. We have added square louvered vents for the apartment HVAC units, which will be color-matched to adjoining material, subsequent removal of the roof-mounted HVAC equipment with that. That was a condition that you did agree with. We're eliminating the stair bulkhead and reducing the elevator bulkhead from 14 feet 6 inches down to 5 feet 6 inches, lowering the height of the building overall, which is something I think this board agreed on. There's the addition of some garage exhaust fence, which was not an issue. The change of cornice material from FIPON to EFIS. We have also updated the request from the previous time, which was, we proposed to put the transformer on the ground. I'm going to show you that in a second. And then there's the removal of a decorative wall around the egress path on the northern side of the site, as well as the addition of an emergency generator in conformance with the building code. These were all, these were also issues that were not ones of concern in the last meeting. So with that, just a real quick showing of the overall site plan. You can see here, kind of difficult to see, I think, for the board, but I have a couple of closer views. So this is what we're proposing right now as a transformer. We have to go to ConEd, so ConEd's going to tell us, yeah, this will work or it won't work, but essentially, it's a 225-volt transformer. It's about that size. So it's essentially four feet, you know, four inches high, 41 inches, you know, in depth, 34 in length. It's not very big, sort of a box. What we're proposing to do is we're going to move the path, which was originally sort of this path that kind of jumped around a little bit. It's now going to that little corner, in the lower left-hand corner of what was previously proposed. We're going to put the transformer, provide three feet of separation between the transformer, and then in front of the transformer on the Ray Place side, we're going to screen it with plantings, so that it's not visible. It'll be visible, obviously, to people who are walking that path, but we don't anticipate many people will ever really have to walk that path unless they're, you know, sort of walking home to get in. So it's not going to be a heavily used path, and again, it's going to be screened from the street. So we think it's, you know, it meets the concern of the board, which is they didn't want to see, you know, you did not want to see a transformer on the pole. So that's been eliminated. We did look into whether it was possible to put it inside the building. Unfortunately, the current design would not accommodate an internal transformer, so we did have to put it on the site. I do want to clarify that before the question comes up. We tried to look at alternatives. This is really the only place on the property where a transformer would fit. We couldn't put it in the back of the property. There wasn't enough room, and we couldn't put it really inside the building, so we're left with that one corner.
I don't know why we didn't ask you that. Doing our homework.
Two in the weeds, sorry.
Cool.
With that, you know, we have all the previous presentation slides. I don't think you want to go through those again, but if you do, I can pull up anything that you need from the previous presentation.
I just want to remember where the pole is, the one that we're coming off of.
Yeah, okay. That's where the poles would be. Essentially, the pole will sit at the corner of the property line in the right-of-way.
It's at the very corner that.
Yeah, so the property line, the rear of CVS, you know, backs into our property, to the front of our property. So I can take you to where that is here. This sort of shows it. The site plan probably gives a better demonstration, so, and I'm not sure if you can see my, you can't. So you see the lower left-hand corner, you can see the black, you know, property line box.
It's the intersection.
So it'll be, you know, in that grassy area, in that general area. Again, it was submitted in the plans that you do have, but it's hard to show on screen, so.
I'm good. I think that's a nice improvement. Thank you. Guys, we're good?
Yeah.
This is an open public hearing, so if anyone has comment on this application, now's the time to do it. If not, I'm going to make an.
There's a hand back there.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, come on up.
I'm not very good with diagrams. Can you just set up a pitch of the building and then show me where the transformer's going to go? Like, is it to the left of the driveway? Or, oh, I'm sorry, Pat Gabriel, 24 Ray Place.
Sure. I'm going to go up to screen.
Yep. And it's got shrubs around it.
Right.
You won't even know it's there. Does it make noise? Does it make noise?
A transformer?
Yeah, like a hum or anything?
I don't know. I didn't ask. If it does, it's a very low hum. It would be an extremely low hum, not a noise that would be noticeable.
And it's shaded with shrubs, so we're good. Okay, so then, any other comments, please? You didn't ask.
Frank Sweeney, 22 Lakeview Avenue. I want to thank the developer for hiding the transformer. Did a nice job in terms of doing that. I'd just like to know whether the building is going to be 5G or cable-ready, rather than attempting to bring all cable in from the telephone pole. Just a question that I have, that if you take a look at Brook Street, there's one apartment house that has about six or eight apartments, and guess what? We have six or eight lines dripping off the telephone pole for each one of those cable boxes that they have in the house. So I was just wondering if you've thought about the possibility, whether it'd be 5G or cable-ready? That's all.
Sure, he will.
And the third question is that I prefer not to have individual connectors, whether it be 5G or cable. I like to have a single cable coming into the complex and run interior rather than exterior lines. But I think the way you have the pole set up now, it looks pretty clean. The idea is whether you can get one line in for the cable, one line in for the fiber, it'd be a great success. So that was my thoughts.
John Saraceno, Augustus Development. Both Verizon and whoever Cable Vision is now will run the lines underground into a cable room in the building, and then it'll be distributed from the building to the apartments. So it'll be, it'll be internal.
Things internal?
Yeah.
You're not going to see anything. It's all, you're not going to see anything, it's all underground.
Yeah. You're not going to see anything, it's all underground. Yes, correct.
Good. Great, thank you. We're good? Okay. There's a lot of interest in this tonight. Please come up.
Good evening. Charlie Gallonick, 21 Potter. We heard about the transformer for Con Edison. If my understanding is they're going to have an additional generator on a property, and if that's true, where is it going to be located and how's it going to, what type of energy is going to operate that? Thank you.
Sure. Do you have that on plan? I think you showed it at the last, the last meeting, right?
Yeah, I did. I have it here. I'll show you again. You know what? I'm going to show you on the plan. That's easier to see. So the generator is going to be located in the corner, in the rear of the property, to the, I guess to the left if you're looking from Ray Place, but it's the one corner of the property that is completely surrounded by, and will permanently be surrounded by commercial areas. So it's in the rear of the property, as far as it could possibly be from the residential on Ray Place, but in consideration of the fact that there might be residential development in the future on the, at the next adjacent property, which is currently parking, or was previously parking for the Chico's or the, you know, store that was there before the Chico's, that could be redeveloped in the future for residential. We didn't want to put anything on that side. So it is located essentially in the farthest corner of the property, as far away from residential as possible. And we're required to put the generator, so it's not like we have a choice.
Sir, could you just go back to the diagram you showed of the location of the transformer?
The transformer? Yeah.
And just.
The transformer, it's the same diagram, and the transformer's right here in the front.
I got nothing up here.
It's not working.
So it's in the northeast corner of the property, is that right? As you're looking at the building, it's to the left and in the far back corner?
Correct. So Ray Place is on the western portion of the property. The northwest corner has the transformer, the northeast corner, which is towards White Plains Road in Brooks.
And towards the CBS, right?
That's right. That is where the generators locate.
I think he also asked what type of power is it going to be, or what type of generator, do you know?
Gas?
Yeah, it's gas.
Right, so the biggest concern is obviously how often it's cycled on and off to test it, just general operations.
You have to test it once a week.
So it goes on once a week?
Midday, you have to test it. It doesn't go to full power, I think, but does, because I'm not as familiar with this question.
The generator company will exercise it once a week at a time we pick, and it's on and off. You know, we can pick it 12:00 in the afternoon, and it'll just go on its schedule.
How long it's staying for?
I don't think it's very long at all. I, you wouldn't even notice it. We have, you know, they're pretty much in every building now. Also, all new buildings have them, and you don't even notice it.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Further public, Mr. Gallon?
Thank you again. Just a follow-up. So I understand this, it is natural gas that's going to be running this generator?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. How is that natural gas going to get to the generator and from where? Is it coming, what location does it come from? Brook Street? Is it coming from Ray Street, Ray across on the other side of the street? And I'm assuming it's going to be on the ground, but these are questions that I'd like to try to get answered.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions before you go back? Okay, cool.
Let me see if I can pull up the drawings, the utilities plan. And I can show you exactly.
It's not happening. Oh, you need a, you need a cable.
The cable's not in.
Cable fell out. He's got to switch it over.
Yeah, Gary's.
Yeah, the cable's hooked, I don't know. Try, I'll unhook it and rehook it.
Oh, here we go. Or not. You had it before, didn't you?
Yeah.
It was working a moment ago.
There you go.
It is now. It's Gary.
Okay.
Not you.
Gary is just messing with us right now.
Wants to see me squirm, huh, no? So this is not the final Utilities Plan, but it does show. So this is the generator. It's coming in from, it's going to come in from Brook Street. So it would probably, if it's going to be natural gas, I'm assuming it's going to have to come in from Brook Street to Ray Place. It could also be diesel, so both of those work. I don't have this, unfortunately, I don't have the answer of where it comes from right now.
Where's the gas meter room?
Huh?
Where's the gas meter room in the cellar? That's probably where it's coming.
The gas meter?
There's got to be one, right? That's where it comes in.
I apologize, I don't have that answer.
From what I recall during the presentations a while back, before you came back for some of these changes, one of your development plans had, I believe, well, the utility plan had trenching coming up Ray Place from Brook Street, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's where the natural gas, water.
Yeah, we have trenching, we have brand-new trenching that's coming up for, you know, for sewer, we have trenching that's coming up for water, and so I think that, you know, we would look to put the gas line in compliance with wherever it's going to come from. The gas moratorium does allow for the use of gas for generators, for emergency generators, but I don't know if we've actually decided whether or not we need to go with a diesel generator or a gas generator. I think we'd just kind of go with whatever made sense.
Right, and the building's being serviced by gas anyway, correct?
Yeah.
So there's going to be a line in that trench regardless?
Well, no, there's no service. It's an all-electric building.
Oh, it's all electric, okay, sorry.
The only service for gas would be for the generator.
Got it.
So I think that that's why we haven't really made a decision about whether we need to use a diesel generator or a gas. We may just use diesel. It would be to be determined. We know where it's going to go, but we haven't gotten to that final stage of the plan. So it may end up being functionally cheaper because the cost of running a gas line that far may be more than we want to do, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go any ones?
Good evening. Michael Fisiglioni, 43, Woodruff Avenue. I have more of a general question. Back when the original approval for this project was put through your committee, I recall there was a laundry list of specific items that had to be adhered to, pre-construction, during construction, and prior to CVO. My question is basically, when will those requirements be met? Will they be made public? Will be, they be done here at the Planning Board time, or how will they be brought forward? That's basically my question.
So your memory is way better than mine, but I imagine when the previous planner was here, she was very meticulous and made a list of all that.
She did.
Which she has passed on to our new planner. So I can almost guarantee that if she made it, it's been given to him, and it's in his stead at this time.
It was quite detailed, as I recall. I believe there were 11 items, if I'm, I'm sorry I didn't bring the list with me.
I don't recall, but I'm pretty sure if it's there, we'll ask.
So those requirements will be met on a timely basis, as required?
I know my answer isn't specific, but I can be rest assured that if it's there, it's in the file, Mr. Lucas will, Lucas will find it and.
Thank you.
He'll make sure.
So just so I understand, what, because this applicant came back to us with an approved project that had not yet been built, that they were seeking changes, proposed changes to the as-approved application, but, and we're making decisions on those proposed changes, but everything else that was approved remains in place?
You mean in terms of the conditions?
In terms of the conditions, yeah. Okay. So that should address your problem. Everything that was previously approved, that is not the subject of a request, a proposed change, will remain in place as a condition of approval of this revised application.
And it's my understanding that the conditions of approval have to be met, excuse me, prior to issuance of a building permit, for the most part. There could be some conditions, I don't recall all of them, that would be necessary prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. So conditions of approval.
It would be the building permit and then the CVO.
Right, exactly.
Depending on the nature of the conditions themselves.
Right.
Yeah, so I, you know, I'm not sure exactly how the process works here just yet, but in most circumstances, when you submit a final set of plans, you have the, any conditions are going to be listed on those plans, the new plans and the new resolution that you pass, hopefully, hopefully you pass tonight, is going to include conditions that have to be written onto those plans. So once those plans go out, you know, goes to the process, the planner, you know, looks at it at that stage, the, you know, the building inspector, you've got a great building inspector here as well, is going to make sure that those conditions are met and followed in the submission of those plans and are done throughout the construction process. So sort of every step of the phase, it's documented and can be followed up on.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Gallon, this is your last shot. Come on up.
I should have an extension, since it's on the same question of what was asked before. We have the conversation tonight about the auxiliary generator. I asked what type of gas, you know, natural gas or gasoline? Oh, no, natural gas. Then, when I had pointed out again when I came up, I had asked, how are they going to get the pipe there? Where's it coming from? We have drawings that are shown that don't show it. I mean, we're showing other things, where the transformer's going to go, but we're at a meeting tonight, and the board is supposed to look at these things and approve them, and you're not actually seeing where it's going. You're getting, pointing on the finger here and over there on the map, but it's not drawn out to you. And then when we, when I questioned about gas lines, I don't know if you caught this, I'm assuming we all caught it, well, it could be diesel. Diesel was not in the words, but when you challenge something over here with this firm, things change, and boy, did it change quickly tonight. It went from gas or diesel. Okay, we're going to put diesel, where's the tank going to go? Where's it on a, on a, on a planning board maps and the diagrams that are presented to the board? It's not there. And before, I request respectfully, before the board approves this project, to have all this stuff out again for another public hearing, so that we all see it, including yourselves. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
All right. I appreciate the comment. You know, I would respectfully submit that if you're an individual who's lived in your home for, you know, the last 30 or 40 years, and you decided because of weather events or for whatever reason, you want to get your home a generator, you go, you, you know, you find a contractor, you get your plans drawn up, and you go to the Building Department, and maybe your house doesn't have gas. You have to get a gas line run from the street, just like anybody else, right? Or you need to get an additional gas line to run from your existing service to your property. It's a very similar process here. The site plan process is to make sure that the generator, which can make some noise, is located in the right location, but the building code and safety codes are going to dictate where that line should run. And so ultimately, we do have to make a decision about whether it's going to be a diesel line, a diesel generator, or a gas generator. And that's sort of a financial decision. It's also a decision if the Building Department says we'd prefer to have one over to the other. But at the end of the day, we know where that generator's going to go. We may not know specifically where the line's going to go, but all of this has to be determined through the building permit process, and we're prepared to do that. It's, there's no, I think, there's never been an expectation that we're going to walk out tomorrow, and if we get an approval, we're just going to go start digging in the dirt. There's a lot of steps, a lot of evaluation of the project that needs to move forward. This doesn't seem like the kind of thing that needs to be held up. It's not going to go underneath the sidewalk, it's not going to go anywhere it's not allowed to be. It has to either, you know, run in the grass or run where it's allowed to be based off of ConEd and based off of the Building Department requirements. So it's correct. We don't know today, because I didn't bring the site engineer with me, because I didn't think this question would come up. But at the end of the day, the reason we didn't bring the engineer is because these kinds of questions aren't necessarily, at least in our mind, ones that can't be handled through the Building Department process. It's been a very long go in reviewing this project. We, when we originally came through this project, we didn't need a generator. Now that we're going through it again, we do need a generator, and so we're putting it in, we're trying to find the right place for it. There's really only one good location to put it. The question about whether it's going to be diesel or gas is one that does ultimately need to be made by the Building Department, and we're going to follow whatever code we're required to.
So the concern is, is a valid one, that if it's gas, I'm liable to, I'd say, I know there's a gas line, I'm sure if you go up to build the planning department, they'll show you, they'll show Mr. Gallon where the line for the gas is, and that sort of resolves that. So one way it's going to get there. The concern about the diesel, though, is an interesting point. It's, it's, where do they, they put a tank for a diesel? If you, if they decide, based on economics, to go to diesel, how is the fuel brought to the generator?
It's all in the closure, so it's all.
Saying, is it filled individually, or is there a tank going next to the generator? That's a diesel tank? Because that's a site plan issue.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ed Vogel, Warshower, Melussy Warshower.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ed Vogel, Warshower, Malucy Warshower Architects. Um, when there's a diesel generator, there is a belly underneath the generator that holds the diesel. So there's a trade-off between diesel and natural gas, and that diesel has a tank that will then be drained or consumed during operation that needs to get refilled. So it's sized for a certain period of time, and then they will have to bring in. Um, and it's, as with other fuels, they will then have a truck, the truck is gonna transport and pump it back into the tank.
So it's a belly tank?
It's a tank. It sits underneath the generator itself. The footprint doesn't change.
Right. Well, that's a good answer. Right, so it really doesn't change anything other than it's being fueled by fuel beneath, and a truck has to pull it in versus a continual service from the street?
From the street, correct.
Sure. But what if you, if there is a change and you guys decide to change, does that get noted on the site plan approval? That just the tank model changes, or it's more a question for you? Does it really matter, or?
Well, I mean, after, I mean, it depends on the scale of the, of the change, you know? Like, with the generator, I mean, that's usually typically handled through the building permit process, so.
Right.
You know, the, the plan gets approved by your board. Obviously, you know, time elapses between the approval here and when they actually put a shovel on the ground and start building. A change like that would just be commended through the, the building permit process.
But we don't really need to see it.
Right, right. I mean, there's certain triggers that would bring the matter back before this board, and that would not be one of those triggers.
Okay. It's not changing the appearance of the, of the generator? It's the same generator? It's just, okay.
And if you, I think you mentioned that you, you'll do whatever the building department wants you to do.
Requires.
Requires you to do.
Whatever they require us to do.
But, but are you basically going to the building department and, and asking, what do you want? Or are you going there with a proposal that we want to put in gas, or we wanna put in the diesel? Can you approve that? Whi- which is it? Is it, you completely?
Yeah, we'll go in with a, a proposal, um, and then we'll listen to the building department. If they say no, uh, we'd prefer it this way. And again, if the building permit process dictated that they wanted us to move the generator, then I imagine we might end up back in front of this board looking at a site plan change. But as long as the, it stays there, we're gonna go in and propose. If we speak to Con Ed and Con Ed thinks that it makes sense for us to use a gas line, uh, then we'll do that. If Con Ed says there's, we're just not gonna run the extra gas line because of the moratorium, despite the fact they allow it for generators, or maybe their laws change, then we'd just come in with a diesel, uh, generator. So the, the laws are, are somewhat flexible today, uh, but that doesn't mean that Con Ed couldn't say tomorrow, you know, no more gas generators. So.
And, and you also, I think you mentioned that when this project was first presented, there was no such requirement for this type of generator, but when did that requirement come into play?
I think it was always there.
I know the first approval came, there was no generator. I, I know somewhere during the process, the generator was required, but that wasn't the trigger that brought us here. But Ed, maybe you can talk a little bit about that?
The trigger for the generator is tied into the elevator, of all things, because the elevator ends up now being a elected evacuation route for people with disabilities. All right? So that wasn't, um, part of what the charge was through the building code and that came about.
So during the development of the project, it became a necessity and therefore the generator was needed?
Life safety.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I'm okay with the generator, but at some point, does the planning department know what you're putting in?
It's an internal process, but I would assume that the planner is gonna be involved in the building department process.
Right, okay.
Just so it shows up.
I mean, you could make that a, a condition.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, that the, uh, the service to the proposed generator be subject to approval from the building inspector.
Okay. We're good?
Uh, Bill, uh, Bill Fiavanti, twenty-four Ray Place. Uh, a month ago, last time we were here, um, you know, the architect, you know, has planned with putting the telephone, I mean, the power lines above ground. Before, I mean, you guys approved to have the lines below ground. And I understand, we talked about costs, and, you know, he's trying, they're trying to absorb costs because we know all the costs have gone off of construction and, um, you know, so that's why we're here. So, my, my point is, is that if you approve this with those power lines at the bottom of the hill, they're gonna put a sidewalk. Look, I've lived here for many years. These guys have not. They don't know the area. I know the area. People walk up and down the sidewalk, little kids, older people. What if these power lines, these poles come down, they electrocute somebody? Across the street is a, uh, a building that's, has a lot of senior people in it, um, fixed income, some of them like disabled. What if those lines go across, they park their cars right across the street where they're gonna put these power lines? What if those power lines should shoot over and accidentally, you know, maim somebody, kill somebody? I guess it'll be a lawsuit. I guess the lawyers will have a field day with that lawsuit. Um, this, these poles should not be on the hill. When twenty-four Ray Place was built back in the eighties, there was never any power, power lines built above ground. They should not be above ground. The winds, the climate change with these storms, these winds are very powerful. Saturday's gonna be another storm. There was a storm last weekend. I mean, they, you know, they should sit there in a storm and see what's going on at the area. Tony Colavito had a meeting a couple of weeks ago about this letter with the governor's proposal. I spoke to Tony about this thing, and with the power lines as well. So he's aware of it. So you guys should not approve the power lines going above ground.
Does the supervisor's letter address power lines, or just density?
Well, they're putting in poles from the bottom of the, look, there's no poles going in the twenty-four Ray Place. Everything is below ground, because it's such a steep hill. And they've changed their, you know, they've changed their, uh, schematics because before, the power lines were going below ground, correct?
Yeah, you're right.
Yes.
They presented that at the last meeting or two meetings ago, and we discussed this. We gave them this direction, and we accepted it. I don't think, we already accepted it. That's why they're back.
Oh, it's below, go, okay, below.
Yeah, we did. We didn't.
Okay.
You unfortunately weren't here to voice your opinion, but we've already made the decision that we'll approve it, just to keep, to, to.
Okay.
Let the project move.
I got you.
I, I know it doesn't answer your question, but we.
You know, it does. It's, I mean, I brought that up last time, so I'm just reiterating about that again. Cause I thought, when I saw on the, you know, on the di, on, when he was showing, I thought they were still approving it to go above ground.
Well, it's above ground up to the pole, then it goes down.
Right.
To the transformer. Right. So it's getting the line from Brook up to the site is above ground.
Yeah, no, I understand the transformer part. That I get. Okay. Then answers my question.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
Good. Oh, you wanna comment on the lines? Okay, good.
No, I mean, I, the only thing I would say is, um, you know, I, I showed it in the last presentation, um, and I can show it again here if you want me to or not. But twenty-four Ray Place had a pole that was put in specifically to get power to their property.
No, we're good.
Yep, yep. We, we don't need to revisit.
Yeah, okay.
Please.
Additional comments? Okay, cool. So, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. So, I make a motion to close the public hearing, application twenty-two dash forty-seven five Ray Place.
Second.
And if we don't have any more comments, I'm gonna make a motion.
You got it all in favor.
I'm sorry, you have to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. But one more time, I make a motion to close the public hearing in this application?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So now, to move this forward, um, subject to the condition about the fuel for the generator, um, and other conditions, I make a motion to approve application twenty-two forty-seven five Ray Place, as submitted on plans entitled Planning Board Re-submission three-nine-twenty-three, as well as landscape plans submitted for, submitted for today's meeting, revised on April tenth, twenty-twenty-three. Subject to condition that all previously approved railings be put back on the plans as discussed at the March twenty-third planning board meeting. In addition, unless otherwise specifically modified by this resolution or plans approved hereby, all conditions or any prior approval of any board, department, or officer of the town of Eastchester shall remain in full force and effect. That's the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, next application is twenty-three oh-two, two oh-three Beach Street. No?
My apologies, Mr. Chairman. We had this issue the last time as well.
Pretty cool screensaver.
Yeah. Oh, well, okay, now, now we're, that's the screensaver.
We could just look at that.
That happens to be, just in case you're wondering, that is the Peacock Room at Graceland.
Graceland.
On the way.
At Elvis's mansion. So, that was taken on a family trip.
Oh, that's one of his pianos. There you go.
Yes. So, I'm a little perplexed as to why the screensaver's up and the presentation is not. I can do a couple Elvis tunes for you if you'd like, while we're waiting, but I don't think, I don't think that would be appropriate at this point. Uh, give me a minute.
Yeah, keep trying. We'll talk amongst ourselves. Like that you're doing misfits without him knowing. And as I said, I think that just makes everything worse. Doesn't really help the issue, but. It was, um, someone did a fire truck tornado incident.
It's in one of the lands.
You saw that, right? I might just go back, cause it looked like they did. It looked like they had to back it, back it up.
Ah, there we go. Okay, why don't I get going while we still have it up on the screen? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Sorry. Yep, I'm back.
My apologies. Did, I'm sorry, did you open the public hearing?
It remained open.
It remained open.
It is open.
Very good. Um, for the record, David Smith, Principal of Planning and Development Advisors, uh, here on behalf of Four of Lozen LLC and Mr. Bascom Kukoy, uh, who's the owner and project developer. Joining me, Mr. Brian Dempsey from DTS Providence, our traffic engineer, Mr. Dan Collins from Hudson Engineering. Uh, the application, uh, that's being discussed tonight is for a subdivision, two oh-three Beach Street. You have the site location here. Um, let's see if I can get the, okay, the laser pointer works. Okay, so here's Highland Avenue at the north end, to the top here, uh, Beach Street here at the bottom. The property outlined in black is one, approximately one-point-one-eight acres. That is the project site. Uh, the, the blue line here is the zoning designation line. Uh, to the left is R-five, to the right is R-six, so we have a couple of lots that are affected by, or, uh, crossed by both law zoning districts, but that's been accommodated as part of the, the site layout. Um, the, the red line here is the school district boundary. Uh, to the north is, uh, the Eastchester School District, to the south is the Tuckahoe School District. Uh, this is a, uh, just a illustration of the proposed project subdivision set within its context. Uh, these are single fam, proposed single-family homes next to single-family homes. Um, we have, uh, during the course of this review, uh, met with, uh, your town staff, and I think we had provided some background to that at their last public hearing. We met with planning, building, fireway, highway, fire, police, and they all provided input that was, that has been accommodated as part of the proposed subdivision. Um, this is the, uh, proposed layout. Uh, Lot One is located off of Beach Street, has direct access off of Beach Street. Uh, there's a proposed cul-de-sac, uh, that meets all the town standards, with lots two, three, four, five, and six accessing the proposed cul-de-sac. And then Lots Seven and Eight are located off of Highland Avenue, and they would have direct access off of Highland Avenue. Um, all the lots have been, uh, laid out to be conforming to zoning. Uh, there is a, a, a non-buildable lot located here, uh, which, uh, will accommodate the onsite stormwater management system. Uh, this is a graphic, again, that just shows, uh, and it was requested that, uh, we provide an illustration that shows how each lot could be laid out with, uh, a proposed home, garage, and a patio and other appurtenances. Uh, I, this was a graphic that we had showed, again, just illustrating the land use pattern in and around the, uh, the subject site with respect to, um, there were several issues about, um, cul-de-sacs, and I think we had indicated there were at least ten or eleven cul-de-sacs, uh, within this, this general neighborhood, uh, so, again, similar, single-family homes next to single-family homes. As part of the, uh, presentation, um, we did clarify the, there are two proposed, um, variances being requested. Uh, the first is for, um, the small area, approximately thirty-one square feet here. Uh, it's for, um, the, uh, the right-of-way intersection at the street width, and I think there was a question at the, at the last meeting, um, by one of the, the neighboring property owner, and while we're requesting this variance for this small piece here, um, we're not looking to be taking, um, the neighbor's property. That's just a variance that's being requested. Um, and then the, the second variance is the distance between, the offset distance between intersections. This is Cywinoid Boulevard here at the top, and the offset distance is approximately a hundred and eight feet. Uh, then the zoning requirement is a hundred and fifty feet. And I think in our presentation that we, uh, submitted to, uh, your board dated April tenth, uh, we reviewed, um, kind of the discussion that was had with, uh, with your board and with your professional staff about the, um, the, the types of circumstances where having an offset distance that's not necessarily a hundred and fifty feet doesn't present issues with respect to traffic and circulation. Um, at this point, uh, I would like to have Mr. Dempsey come up. Mr. Chairman, you had asked for a couple of additional graphics. Um, they were included with the submission package. Um, I'd just like to have Mr. Dempsey go through, um, an update as to the additional information he's provided as part of this. he's provided as part of the submission package, and then he can quickly walk through those different graphics that kind of illustrate the magnitude of the traffic.
Yes, thank you for preparing that.
Good ea, excuse me, good evening, for the record, Brian Dempsey, I'm a licensed professional engineer from the firm DTS Providence Design Engineering. I'll try to be brief, because a lot of this we've covered before. At the last hearing, we were asked to do a couple more things. One was, one of the residents asked for a traffic count at Rose and Beach, we performed that count, that's included in our April seventh response letter. And then, we were asked to do those, the colored charts to show the difference in traffic volumes at the three intersections that were studied, to show a relationship of existing traffic versus existing trucks, existing buses, and then future trucks, future buses, and future traffic from the site. So, what's in dark blue here is the existing traffic counts, those are the, the dark blue is the cars that are existing at, at each of the intersections. Going from left to right is Highland and Beach, middle one is Beach Street and Cywinoy, and then the far right is Beach Street and Rose Avenue. So, just looking at Highland and Beach, you had three hundred and fifty-three existing cars going through the intersection, which would be about eighty-nine percent of the traffic at the intersection. Then there were eleven buses that were traveling along Highland at that intersection, or coming off of Bee, coming off of Beach, seven trucks. We then included a background growth rate to a design year of, so we added six percent to all existing traffic to get to a future design year of twenty twenty-five. Then, we added our traffic, so our traffic at here during the peak AM hour was going to be four vehicles, and there is a potential for two additional buses, most likely those would be the buses that are already on Highland, but we included two additional buses, just to be safe, that, that's the last line, the very thin green line. So, we did this at each of the intersections for both the AM condition and the PM condition, as shown in both, the amount of traffic from our project, including possible additional buses, is, is not a significant number, especially in relationship to the other volumes that are counted at, at each of the intersections. We were also asked about looking at what else can be done, because it was stated by some residents that some cars do not stop at the stop sign at Beach and Cywinoy. We made some recommendations that have been reviewed by the town's traffic consultant, they could be stop-ahead signs on both Beach and on Cywinoy to further enhance the stop sign, adding an additional dead-end sign at the extension of Beach where it was stated that sometimes cars do drive through there instead of making a turn, or you could do cat tracks, which is extending the WL line, a WL line or dash, it's basically just dashes showing that you should be turning at that intersection. And that could be stuff that could be worked out with the highway department.
Did you guys do an additional set of counts at the intersections, or on different dates?
Yes, some we went through last hearing, so...
That was the last hearing, you did it, right.
But, but we did more, and there's, there is, everything is documented in here.
In your memo, in this April night.
Yeah, and I can go through them, I was just trying in terms of time.
You're saying those additional counts were on different days than the initial
Yes.
study were done prior to the last meeting?
There was a comment that we had counted on Monday, Monday afternoon at the intersection of Highland Avenue at Beach, so we counted on Wednesday, March eighth, which was a very sunny day, nice weather, counted the same time periods. That Wednesday count actually was forty, excuse me, my mouth is getting dry, forty-seven vehicles less than the Monday count, so the Monday count was actually much higher than the Wednesday count. We also, at the request of the town's traffic consultant, counted various cul-de-sacs to see how the trip generation, so the number of vehicles coming in and out of those cul-de-sacs compared to what we did use in the traffic study, because our traffic study was based on ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the standard that municipalities, the county, the state all require. We compared them and showed that the IT numbers were conservative compared to the other cul-de-sacs there. They were similar, but, but our numbers were, that we used were somewhat higher than what the other cul-de-sacs were generating. We also had talked to the school district from Tuckahoe on, with various calls about, you know, when their peak times were and such, and when their dismissal times are, which we have, we included in the, in our letters. We did an additional count at Beach and Cywinoy from one-thirty to six PM, and it showed the peak was similar to what was in our traffic study, but they had several time periods, which the peak was, the traffic volume was very close, so it was only, it was forty-seven in one hour, forty-eight the other, so the volumes actually stayed relatively consistent during most of that time. As I said, we analyzed the, counted and analyzed the intersection of Rose and Beach. As we had stated before, the level of service was, it's a good level of service, it's a level of service A. We did analysis, including our traffic in there, we showed it has no significant impact, it essentially doesn't affect the levels of service at the intersection. We did talk about the, the distance between cul-de-sacs, and we have it documented in here, such as along Tuckahoe Road, brother, between Brother Circle and Caldwell Street, it's only fifty-three feet between the two cul-de-sacs. On Everett Street, between Seventh Avenue East and Seventh Avenue West, it's eighty-eight feet. Along Ridge Street, between Pine Circle and York Place, it's only thirty feet, and then we have others in our, in our letter there. There was a comment about the parking ban on the south side of the street. Well, we were asked from, from the fire department was to prohibit parking just opposite our driveway, so the fire engine can make the turn into it. So, it's just essentially extending our driveway, that width would be for the fire engine. So, here, this is one of the site plans, so if you drew two imaginary lines outside of our driveway across, they, they were asking for no parking in that section, so their apparatus can make the turn easier.
Did you guys do a turning radius for the fire apparatus and the cul-de-sac?
Yes, yes, there's all been, they're on, the site plans, they were submitted, and they were reviewed by the fire.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, were you done, or I just?
Well, Dave's gonna try to find.
Okay, cool, 'cause...
Okay, so this is, these were done by Hudson Engineering, we did review them, they have been submitted, and they were reviewed with the fire department, and they were in agreement with it. They did ask, in conjunction with this, that there be no parking within the circle part of the cul-de-sac.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
Just any questions?
So, could you go back to your graph, your bar charts, please? Good. Can you zoom?
I'll let Dave try it.
Obviously, to the top part. Cool. Yeah.
I could?
Maybe the, pan down a little bit, so we look at the top. I'm just, yeah, good, that's perfect. So, my understanding, it's clear, because it's on the legend, is the tan is the, the, represents the growth, due to growth alone, that you might anticipate at these intersections?
Yeah, basically, it's standard practice, we add in a background growth. We did check with the town beforehand whether there's any developments in the area that would affect traffic, there were none, based upon our discussions with Margaret at the time, but to just to be conservative, we added a two percent per year compounded growth rate for three years, and so that's what that, that number represents.
Oh, how many, three years, you said?
What?
How many years is that over?
Three years.
A three-year growth, wow. That's a lot, and that's similar on all the bar charts. Okay. Got it. Any questions, guys? So, just a general question, the, you know, we're car counts, it seems to be a pretty specific item that is what you opine on, or thus you guys test. Is the whole traffic environment back there based on car counts, or is it a bigger picture?
Based on car counts or what, sorry?
Or anything else, like speeds and
Well, no, we, all those different factors get looked at, and in the analysis, it includes with the roads and other factors, and pedestrians and things of that nature, so that's all accounted for in the analysis. We did look at speeds, because we had, we looked at speeds in conjunction with site distances. The speeds on Beach are not that high. We looked at crash history going back to twenty nineteen, that we got from the state, and the last three years we've also got from the town. So, all those factors are looked into. We did recommend with the sight lines, some, some trimming on some bushes, we're gonna, is, will be needed, especially on, at Highland, at the site there with the driveways. So, those factors are all considered.
Okay. I'm good, thank you. We're gonna ask our consultant to, to speak in a minute, but I think first we're gonna talk about yours. Thank you.
Okay, so I will quickly wrap up the, the presentation, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, we did have this discussion about on-street parking, and I can quickly summarize that, based on our review, there are approximately nineteen on-street, the availability of nineteen on-street parking spaces, and to be conservative, we looked at how many you could get in the best configuration, so that was having all of the on-street parking on the north side of Beach. And we went through evaluation of looking at, all right, well, how many would have to be removed in order to get the proposed cul-de-sac in place, and we have to remove, did we call five, five, five spaces, right? And essentially, as, as Brian indicated, we need to keep this, this area open. And based on the input from the fire department at the staff meeting we had on March tenth, they said that having include, that we could include six on-street parking spaces as part of the proposed cul-de-sac, with a limitation on parking within the cul-de-sac itself, so that at the end of the day, on-street parking went from nineteen to actually twenty parking spaces in this configuration. And then, again, somebody had asked about, well, what happens if you have guests and visitors, and we prepared a graphic which illustrates that each lot has its own, has two parking spaces required by zoning, but given the length of driveways and garages, you could get anywhere from, I think it's four to six, or even maybe eight in one instance, cars parked off-street at each site, each lot. And again, this is the, the graphic that was prepared and included as part of the application package, which shows the turning radius that the, the fire department had reviewed. And I'll just note that I did go on the town's website this afternoon, I was getting the agenda, and I saw that there were some other additional correspondence submitted by residents that had the Eastchester Fire Department out at the, the site for, for doing some maneuvers, and it's unclear to us, we were not notified that, that this was happening, we don't know what the purpose was, and so we're a little, at a little bit of a loss, because we did have a meeting with the representative of the fire department on, on March tenth to review the specifics of the plan. So, we believe that the plan conforms to the requirements of the Eastchester Fire Department for respect to circulation. So, in summary, we have provided specific analysis, plans and reports, we supplemented our documentation, we responded to the comments from your professionals. We believe that at, at this point, you're in a position, if you so desire, to make a determination of significance for, under secret, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and we would respectfully request that you would consider that, that request, that a negative declaration be issued, and allow us to proceed with the, the next steps in the process, which would be to go to the zoning board of appeals for the two requested variances, and then if we get the, the variances, we'll be coming back to your board for final subdivision approval. So, I thank you again, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board.
You're welcome.
If you have any questions, if you have them.
Actually, I think we're gonna hear from our consultants now about site civil, you don't have any site civil updates for the week, for the, you don't have any updates on the site plans or anything else?
No, no, the site plans, no, everything's
Okay. Great, then we're gonna run through our consultants and hear their comments. We'll save the best for last, Mr. Greeley, Mr. Tramelli, could you tell us what you're up to?
Good evening, everyone, for the record, Joe Tramelli with Keller Sessions Consulting. You have our memo from last week, a lot of our standing comments still apply, referring to not only approvals required by this board and by the town, but also Westchester County Health Department for the subdivision, as well as for the proposed extensions to the sanitary and sanitary sewer and water mains, as well as approval from Veolia Water for extensions of the water main. And they're, they're actively pursuing and acknowledges the need for those approvals, and those will come in time, certainly before, I would imagine that would be conditioned as part of the, the final site plan approval. With regard to sanitary sewer, we had requested, and the applicant provided a, an analysis of the potential impact from these additional eight homes to the surrounding sewer system. We reviewed it, we consulted with your highway foreman, or superintendent, rather, and find that the study provided adequately demonstrates that the capacity of the existing system is adequate for these homes. So, in general, the, the two homes that front Highland Avenue will connect via individual service connections to the existing main on Highland Avenue. There was a, a two-family home, I believe, in that area previously, on that, on one of those lots. So, in, in essence, the increase, the increase in sanitary flow to that main from this lot is marginal. We went from a, you know, existing two-family house to two single-family homes. The balance, the six homes on the cul-de-sac, or the, I'm sorry, the five homes on the cul-de-sac, and the one home that fronts Beach, they would all discharge two they would all discharge to the existing sanitary main on Beach Street. The first lot would have a individual connection... Does that... I'm sorry, Dan, does that go to the main? Everything goes to proposed main? So, all six lots would go to the proposed main in the cul-de-sac. That main is an extension of the existing sewer on Beach Street. And coincidentally, at that area on Beach Street, there is a high point in the system. So, there is a sanitary main to the immediate west of the cul-de-sac that collects sanitary flow and discharges north on Beach Street towards Highland and then down Highland Avenue. The section of the main that they're connecting to is to the east of the cul-de-sac or on the eastern portion of the site. That main flows southerly on Beach and then down Siboney. So, there's a divide there. The existing sanitary main does not continue across the site. In speaking with the highway department, there are no known issues with the sanitary main on Beach to which the applicant is connecting and proposing the extension. They did a conservative analysis, assuming that the pipe, the existing pipe, would be 50% full and then added their flows projected from the development to that. And it showed a very small percentage of an increase to the flows, more than enough capacity in the pipe. I forget the exact numbers, but somewhere in the order of an available capacity of, say, I think it was close to 600 gallons a minute. And the projected flow from the development was only eight, eight or nine. So, certainly more than enough capacity in the line to accommodate the proposed sanitary generation from the project. With regard to stormwater, before I leave that, the sanitary point, one of the, I guess, a policy and what the town tries to do with projects like this is reduce inflow and infiltration to the existing system to offset the generated waste from the project. So, similar to Five Ray Place, when we first reviewed that, there are measures and means in place to make improvements to the sanitary system in that sewer shed to offset the projected increase. As we... With this project, we also spoke with the highway department and questioned whether or not there were any known issues in either the sanitary line on Highland Avenue or the system, the existing system behind on Beach Street. He doesn't know of anything specific. We will continue to investigate and we'll work with the highway department. As we did on Five Ray, I'm sure we can condition something or create a condition in the resolution that we would look to or continue to look for any potential I and I opportunities to eliminate. And that could be as simple as a leaking manhole or a failed section of pipe that needs some repair. So, we'll work with the highway department to... And the applicant typically televise a couple of sections of the existing main, see what its condition is, and determine whether or not there's a benefit to any repairs, if they're even needed. With regard to stormwater, the applicant obviously has to comply with town code. But because of the size of the project, the level of disturbance, they also need to get coverage under the state's general permit for stormwater. So, there's an elevated level of requirement and mitigation that's required. They provided a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which we reviewed a couple of times. At this point, we're satisfied with the design itself, with the level of mitigation it provides. In general, the existing site was divided into three areas of... Or three drainage areas. There's one that... There's a smaller drainage area that parallels Beach Street. That existing stormwater runoff today flows towards Beach Street and into the existing system. There's a main central portion that flows generally west to east to the properties that join the parcel down below to the east. And then, a third area that is... I don't have a plan or something to put up. But basically, roughly lots, proposed lots seven and eight that flow towards Highland Avenue. Those three areas are analyzed under existing conditions. And we determined peak rates of runoff for the various storms. In this case, the one, 10, and 100-year storm event. Those are then used as targets that are not to be exceeded when you run the same analysis under the proposed conditions. And what the applicant did was basically the cul-de-sac, all the runoff from the cul-de-sac gets collected. It is pretreated in a separator unit. It then discharges into an underground detention system where that water is held back and it's controlled. It's a controlled release so that that peak rate of runoff, as it flows towards, in this case, towards Highland Avenue, does not exceed what happens today. And before it does that, it actually goes through another treatment unit. So, it's getting water quality benefits that don't happen today, removing pollutants from the stormwater runoff. And it's also reducing the peak rate from what happens today. And then, all of the individual lots, the homes and the driveways, all the impervious surfaces are collected and they're discharged into individual infiltration systems on each lot. And those are sized so that there's no discharge from those systems through the 100-year storm. So, the drainage area, for instance, that goes towards Beach Street is reduced significantly because all the water from the cul-de-sac is now collected and directed towards Highland. Although with that system in place, it reduces the rate of runoff towards Highland. So, there's no impact at Highland. The stormwater flow that currently flows from west to east through the site to the residential properties to the east, that drainage... Those rates of runoff, rather, are significantly reduced because now a lot of that water is either collected in the cul-de-sac and discharged elsewhere or contained in the individual infiltration systems on each of the lot. So, you'll still get runoff from the surrounding lawn areas on each of those lots. But all the roof runoff, those land areas that are now gonna be occupied by buildings or driveways are being collected and put into the ground. And conservatively, because they don't know what the design of the house is gonna be for each lot, we requested and they provided an analysis based on the maximum allowable impervious coverage for the lot. So, based on the zoning and based on what zoning allows, they use that percentage as their design. We may find that when they come in for individual site plan, that the house footprint actually reduces a little bit. It's all that much better. Just be a conservative approach. So, with regard to stormwater, I think, well, we're satisfied that there's going to be an adequate mitigation for the project and a reduction in flows as compared to today. The subdivision, the owners will be part of an HOA. And they'll be jointly responsible for the long-term maintenance of the common portions of the stormwater system. So, anything... Certainly, the detention system in that non-buildable lot, the treatment units, pre and post, those water quality structures, and the discharge pipe that runs from those systems through lots five, six, seven, and eight. If you recall the layout, there's a main line that discharges through those properties to Highland. And there's a couple of drain outlets along Highland. The HOA would be responsible for all of that. And then, each individual homeowner would be responsible for their own infiltration systems on their lot. And there'll be a legal agreement between the HOA that the town will have on record, you know, obviously making the HOA responsible. And there'll be provisions in there that, for whatever reason, should the HOA not provide the level that is needed, the town can step in. And then, there's measures to recoup the costs. It's a standard agreement, but will become part of the process. If you have any specific questions or everybody's glassed over right now?
Well, a couple. The first was about, as you said, the inspection or the video of the existing... How old are the sewage drains that you... The mains that you say...
I have maps from, I believe it's 19... I think it's 1943. There's, I think it's six boards that are hanging in the highway department's office are the only known record of the sewer maps in town. And I have pictures of them.
That's pretty cool.
So, we have that, but it is an old system.
It is.
Certainly aged, which is why we would... We would probably... I'll work with the highway department, and we've already spoken about it. But there'll probably be, you know, maybe one or two streets that will want to televise and just check the general condition of it. And if we find that there's something that... A repair that should be made that will help offset their projected flows, then we could work with them to get that done.
As you said, that's typical procedure that we've done on projects, Ray Place in particular.
Not every project, but when certain... When projects rise to a level of development such as this, it's certainly something that we look at. And it's a county policy as well.
Oh, is it? It's a policy. So, that's a recommendation that, I mean, we don't have to deal with that today. But as we continue with the development, it stays in our foresight.
Right.
To... To the... Is it three to one that you try?
Three to one for market rate units, yeah.
Yeah, that's the county policy.
Right. So, it's just good to know that we're gonna go in that direction.
And that came back with our... With the town's original referral of the application to the county. When they sent their letter back, that was one of the recommendations that the town considers, which you already do anyway.
So, it's the applicant's responsibility to fulfill that guideline? Okay, great. As far as water, I think you've explained it very well. I understand it. But I think you also said, not only have we... Maybe you didn't say it, but I'm asking, is this true? Not only have we offset the amount of stormwater being discharged into the stormwater, we've actually maybe reduced it a bit or at least held it on the property for a while?
At a minimum, it's... It meets existing conditions. But if you... If we were to look at the three design points that they're referred to as Beach Street, Highland Avenue, and the eastern property line, Beach Street, pre and post, the post-developed conditions were lessened. The flows going to Beach aren't great to begin with, but at the end of the day, they are lessened. Highland Avenue, because in current conditions, I'd say maybe 40% of the site today goes towards Highland. By redirecting and collecting the runoff from the cul-de-sac and sending that to Highland as well, there's that much water volume heading to Highland. But with the system in place and the detention provided by holding back that collected runoff for an extended period of time, the peak flows to Highland are actually reduced as well. And then, the most significant reduction is along the eastern property line because all that runoff from the cul-de-sac, the area of the cul-de-sac is being directed to Highland where that same land area today flows to the east towards those properties. Right? We're taking that volume out of that portion of the equation, sending it somewhere else. And the runoff from the buildings, which today are lawn areas that runoff towards the east, that's being collected and infiltrated. So, there's a significant reduction to the east.
I think that's pretty clear. Those were my only... My only questions. Thank you for explaining it.
Can you... Oh, sorry. Just for the purpose of the public and their understanding of the way you calculate the increased volume into the sanitary system at a three-to-one basis, can you explain that in simple terms?
How to calculate the...
Not how to calculate, why you calculate three-to-one as opposed to just one-to-one.
So, there's a couple of layers of, I guess, conservatives... It's conservative. The flows from the buildings themselves, from the houses, are dictated by the DEC and their standards for sizing sanitary sewer systems. That flow rate, we then apply a peaking factor of four. So, if it's, you know, you calculate 1,000 gallons coming... 1,000 gallons a day coming from a house, we size and design things for 4,000 gallons a day. And then, using that 4,000 gallons a day county policy that the town wants to follow, we want to offset that by a factor of three, preferably. That's a goal. It's not codified. It's not a mandate. It's a policy and it's a guideline. So, if, in this instance that we're talking about, if we said 4,000 gallons a day is coming off your site, we would like to see you try and find inflow and infiltration in an amount of 12,000 gallons a day that we could eliminate from the system. So, we'll work, as I said, we'll work. And it's not an exact science, but we'll televise some lines, we'll inspect some manholes. And if we see that there's repairs that need to be made and there's significant leaks or whatever it might be, that could... The goal is to remove groundwater infiltration into the sanitary system to free up capacity for what it's meant for, right? Sanitary waste.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm good if there's no more questions? Mr. Greeley?
Good evening. Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering and Design. We had reviewed the submission from April 7th from PDE. And we provided to the board our summary comments April 19th. Before I get into those, just a couple of items that the chair had asked. So, since the last meeting, the applicant had done another traffic count at the intersection of Beach and Rose on March 28th. So, that was the date of the most recent count that was done, okay? Also, in terms of evaluating conditions, it's, you know, as Mr. Dempsey stated, it's not just the traffic counts, it's the makeup of the traffic counts in terms of the vehicle types. And the intersection analysis procedures take into account the turning movements, the vehicle types, pedestrians, the type of traffic control, the speed of the road, as well as the lane widths, and also how those volumes are distributed over an hour period. So, when traffic counts are collected, they're collected in 15-minute increments. The reason is, in the analysis, you want to take into account the peaks. But if there's any surges that occur, let's say within an hour, if it's not evenly distributed. In this area, they're relatively consistent in the peak hours. So, all of those factors go into the analysis that he was referring to. So, relative to our April 19th review, the information provided answered all of our questions relative to trip generation. It turns out that their analysis was somewhat conservative with the trips that they used, you know, for the project. In terms of the traffic count data, they've covered all the time periods. At Siboney and Beach, they provided from 1:30 to 6:00, you know, what the variations of traffic volumes are there. And also, they did a summary relative to crash data. They provided the analysis of traffic at Beach and Rose, which was an additional intersection that was requested at the last hearing. And they've also provided some recommendations in terms of signing, striping. And these are things that, you know, would have to be determined in discussions with the board as well as with the highway and, you know, police department. So, if there are things that the board would like to have added, you know, those could be done by the applicant. There were certain site distance improvements. We had some recommendations in our letter, some additional, you know, pruning and making sure of site distances are provided, as well as some additional signing recommendations. So, at this point, they've answered the various questions. I think that rather than repeat the different categories Mr. Dempsey had covered those, I think our report indicates they've addressed the items. There are some existing conditions in terms of that signing, striping, and other measures may be helpful to address. And that's pretty much, you know, where we are at this point.
Okay. If I could ask, we heard Mr. Tramelli describe how, you know, the water retention might actually have a positive effect relative to the current condition. Is there any way that... Any measures that could be taken that would result in this application being granted and the traffic conditions simultaneously getting better as opposed to worse?
Okay. So, I... There... The... In this particular case, some of the signing and striping to define the intersection better, making sure that advanced signing is in place. So, for example, when you have a stop-controlled intersection, over time, sometimes you'll see, you know, tree branches blocking it. So, one thing that's typically done is to put advanced signing indicating there's a stop sign ahead so that if by chance, over time, something gets blocked... something gets blocked, there's more advanced notice. Striping, reinforcing stop signs by installing painted stop bars, in some cases, other striping to, in some areas, you stripe down to narrow lanes. In this particular case, the, the road widths here are relatively, you know, already, you know, if you had a road width that was over thirty feet, in terms of just, you know, no parking, just thirty feet with two-way traffic, a lot of times you try to stripe the edges to bring the lanes down. We already have that in place here. Things in terms of making it better that can be done in neighborhoods, we categorize as more traffic calming. So once you've taken care of, quote, the, the issues of site distance, proper signing, proper striping, the next step would be if there were excessive speeds, you start looking at traffic calming measures. And in this particular area, you know, for example, there's some areas of the town and in other towns where you have long straightaways where speeds are our problem. So you're, you're either constantly enforcing the speeds with the police department, or you put in measures such as speed signs, speed tables, things like that. Those are all considerations, but you need input from the highway department, the fire department, et cetera. So I think there's things that could be implemented to offset any increases from this project. We, as, as been pointed out, in this neighborhood, in the surrounding neighborhoods, there are no sidewalks, so you have pedestrians moving. In general, you know, that's a case here of keeping the speeds down. When you have pedestrians, you want to keep the speeds down. So I think those are the areas that you could, you know, put some conditions in, you know, with the applicant to participate, and it would require input from highways also.
Well, let me, let me, I have a follow-up question. And, and maybe, maybe I didn't quite understand the, the response you gave. Is there, is there any scenario under which this application gets built and the, the traffic conditions actually are better afterwards than they were beforehand? Or is it just a case of, well, you're gonna, you're adding more traffic flow, whatever that is, and, and you also now have a new cul-de-sac that is only, what, a hundred and eight feet away from the...
Siwanoy.
Points, whatever, yeah, from Siwanoy. That, that, that by, by granting this application, by, by having this development built, you are going to end up with a, a less favorable traffic situation, and the best that we can do is mitigate how much worse that is? Or is there a situation, or is there a possibility where you can actually end up with a better traffic flow, a better situation than exists presently?
So in, in terms of the amount of increase and the measures that they've identified, I think they are addressing their increase in terms of, you know, looking at issues relative to signing, striping, making sure of site distance, so those are important factors. Other things, I mean, we're not at a stage where, you know, you don't need traffic signals here, which would be, if a project was creating something like that, that would be a mitigation to make it better. I, I think what things could be done in this particular case, again, it's, it's more with signing, striping, maybe some traffic calming. If, if there was, you know, a real concern about speeds, you could bring those speeds down. But other than that, there's really nothing that...
Well, I, I, I know, and perhaps we're, we're belaboring this point, or I'm belaboring the point. It, it, it seems to me that you're, by, by adding more, more cars...
Yep.
And, and by adding another street, albeit a cul-de-sac, that you are making a situation that is either not so bad, or, or really bad, depending on who you're listening to.
Yes.
Whatever the, the current situation is, it sounds like you're, you're inevitably making it worse, and the best that you can do is to make it less worse. Is that a fair statement?
So you're, you're adding traffic, so you're adding traffic on the roadway. That's no, no question, okay? In terms of quantitatively saying it's that much worse, the analysis demonstrates, you know, the delay mechanism. So it does not show a significant delay increase in terms of traffic flow at any of the intersections, which is the standard method for evaluating. Is there an impact? From a practical standpoint, you're adding more cars, there are pedestrians, so we want to make sure they're safe, so you make sure you have proper site distances, that traffic leaving the development is controlled, that, you know, there's some parking spaces being removed on Beach, but there are going to be some spaces added in the new cul-de-sac. So I, I think those are the, the categories that you would kind of look at relative to that. If there were no new spaces added, then that's, you're, you're affecting, you know, parking in the area, so.
Okay. Thank you.
The speeds have never been part of a study, right? It's always been about car counts. Because you anticipate that the speeds are enforced, right?
So the traffic counts were done just to identify turning movements. There were no speed measurements that I'm aware of, maybe along Highland, I don't, but I don't believe there are any speed data, specific speed data collected.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I think one of the issues, and, and Dr. Greeley, you could correct me if I'm wrong here, but in this particular area, in terms of speed, there are streets in Bronxville Manor in which there are long straightaways and there are speed issues. Ridge comes to my, the top of my head. I, I think the unique issue about this particular development is that you have a number of narrow turns with a lot of traffic. It, it's not as much a speed issue as the corners and the narrow nature of the streets there. I, I think that's more of the issue in that area, if, if you want to address that. And we see it in terms of enforcement with the traffic tickets in town, in terms of stop signs, in terms of speeds on ridge in traffic court. But I think that the peculiar nature of this particular development, those are the issues that members of the public have addressed, and, and it, it's just peculiar to the configuration of this lot and the streets around it.
So if you look at Beach between Siwanoy and Highland Avenue, you have Rose and you have the other intersecting side streets, so you have, you have intersections there. The curve at Rose, for example, that intersection is, is kind of a three-legged intersection on, on a curve. Again, the sight lines were number one that was looked at, and we recommended some items relative to that. The volumes on each approach at that intersection are not that far off, they're fairly close. Just as if you look at, Siwanoy has two-way stop control at Beach. At Rose, that's a candidate that could be looked at for an all-way stop. You don't use all-way stops for traffic, you know, for traffic calming per se, but for traffic control, that's something that could be looked at. Again, you know, you, because your volumes are of the same order of magnitude. You don't want to be putting stop signs in where you have a much higher main road and a very low side road in this particular, going to an all-way stop. Other signing, you know, with the curve, you sign the curve. There's, you know, signing in the area that directs traffic, say, to the schools, to Tuckahoe's schools. Maybe those signs could be increased in size so that people that are coming from outside the area. Here you have, you know, the, the neighborhood traffic, and then you have any outside traffic. So I think the neighborhood traffic, you know, typically understands the local roads there and the character of them, so.
So the signage to Tuckahoe, if that were made bigger, it might take some people, uh, some cars off the street and put them elsewhere?
Possibly, yes.
Got it. Is there a way, just in general, that traffic conditions in any particular part of any city is characterized, you know, of A-level service, B-level, C, based on many factors that we're considering here, not just car counts?
Yes.
Is there a standard?
So the, the standards, and in this report, you'll see the le, the levels of service, those are for intersections.
Uh huh.
So the intersections here, based on the volumes and all the, the factors, are categorized as levels of service A and B, which means they're, the delays and the operations are of, of the right order of magnitude that you would expect here. Now, in terms of between intersections, okay, we have a case here where the curves and everything else that was referenced, you just want to make sure you have proper signing. There's no real level of service provided, you know, on, on those sections of road.
But there's best practices that are...
Correct.
I imagine.
And that's proper signing, striping, sight lines, and, you know, those are the, the methods that you would work with on those.
Okay.
And, and if speed was an issue, you, you, you start dealing with things such as speed tables, speed humps. We don't really use speed bumps anymore, but again, those are all factors that come into play with highway maintenance, with snow plowing. School buses can handle those, so that's not an issue. But again, that's if speed was a real, real major issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I just want to add one quick observation. Things like level of service, correct me if I'm wrong, but like a level of service at an intersection is a metric that's used, it's biased towards the, the vehicles. Like, it's a level of service A versus a level of service F, is how much time a, a driver sits in a car waiting at the intersection. Those measurements don't take into account impacts to non-motorized lawful uses of the road, like pedestrians, cyclists, those, those users of the road. Most of the public comments that we've received have related to that, the impacts of the vehicles on the non-motorized users of the road. So is there a measurement, I guess, to, to piggyback on the chairman's question, is there a measurement that we could use, or something like that, relative to those factors? You know, improving the situation for the non-motorized users of the road?
Well, there is, there is no, you know, I'll call it level of service for pedestrians other than at the intersection, because that's part of what's included in the, in the calculation. But again, you know, things like signing to make people aware that there's pedestrians there, where there's a curve to sign the curve, and that all relates, you know, if there was a main bicycle route that bicycles use, you would sign that. Again, there, there are no sidewalks in any of these neighborhoods, so it's similar to what transpires in any of the areas here. But yeah, there is no specific, you know, analysis of that per se.
Sure.
But that's where the, you know, the traffic calming measures come into play, and there's, you know, all sorts of methods that can be used for that.
The posted speed limit is twenty-five on, on that road?
Yeah, so in terms of the, the speeds, and, and the speeds are controlled by some of the curves and just the, the width of the road. One of the problems is when you have much wider roads, it encourages speed. So this neighborhood is almost self-combing to a certain extent, because of the, the width of the roads, and it's not, you know, unusual for areas like this to be like that.
Is there a way to control the type of traffic on streets, such as commercial traffic, big trap, big trucks, fire trucks, all of that?
Well...
That could be done to keep big vehicles off the road?
Well, the fire vehicles, you know, are given access on all roads. In terms of commercial traffic, yes, however, local deliveries still have to be made.
Sure.
So if there was an issue of, you know, cut through truck traffic, you can take care of that by signing, but again, the types of trucks that were observed and, you know, they're, they're local deliveries, they're...
They're the same trucks that are on every street?
Yes.
There are portions of town that truck deliveries are not, or truck are not permitted, California Road for instance. It's a no-through-trucking street because vehicles were using that to circumvent the hutch. It runs parallel. And so the law reads that you can't drive a truck on California Road unless you are making a delivery on California Road. It does not include any of the offshoot streets from there, because there are alternate ways of accessing California, accessing those streets that you don't have to take California Road. And that's pretty well enforced. I don't know if this is the same type of situation, you don't have a cut-through problem, but there are ways, you know, to address certain situations like that.
So when you put a sign, no commercial vehicles, it means no commercial vehicles?
No-through-trucking.
But it will be enforced, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It's not just a sign? Okay. All right. I think you've brought up some good points. Thank you for answering. I think we've also have to evaluate what you've put, what you've given us.
Thank you.
Any more questions, guys?
I just have, I have one question regarding the, the subdivision. For the benefit of the public and their knowledge of this process, process prior to even coming, you know, in front of the public here, was there any consideration during the design phase of access to the subdivision from Highland Avenue? And if so, what were some of the reasons as to why you could not accommodate that?
Members of the board, Dan Collins, Hudson Engineering. We were involved with that process back, I guess, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, I feel it was, feels like a long time ago. Originally, when we did look at this property for a subdivision, 203 Beach was not purchased yet, there was a house there. Unfortunately, in order to get the roadway up, it would be first of all beyond the minimum required three hundred feet to the, for the length of a dead-end street for, with a cul-de-sac. In order to make it code compliant, in order to pull it forward, we would have ended up having to take some of the property, actually, if I can bring this up, I don't know. Actually, here you go. Some of this corner of this property would need to come out for the, in order to get the right-of-way for the cul-de-sac. So obviously, this homeowner would actually have to be involved with the subdivision order for us to do that. Obviously, that's not something that, if they don't want it, they're not going to go for it. So between that and then Margaret was basically informed us at the time that the plant, the board would never, or the town would never approve an extended cul-de-sac that was beyond the, the minimum required of three hundred feet, as that would set a precedent. So that was one of the reasons why we did look at that originally. This kind of went away for a while, then, once they purchased the property of 203, we said, hey, look, we can come in on that side, we can get the three hundred feet, we can have the code compliant cul-de-sac, and then we can have a more adequate set of plans. But it was told to us by the town that, that was a, was a no-go.
Were there any issues with the change in elevation from Highland Avenue to the actual cul-de-sac where it's located currently?
There was as well. I don't recall at the time I had what the maximum slope is, but we would have to, you would be cutting in here a lot. So I think what we did have was we had one lot kind of elongated here. We had a stormwater system that was potentially here, but it was a little bit higher up because of the elevations that we needed to get out to the street. And, and to be honest, the, the design wasn't as, as smooth as it is now. And a lot of the houses as well were, a lot of the lots were very narrow, which wasn't a very desirable aspect either.
In that scheme, were there variants? In that scheme, were there variances required?
Yeah, we would have had, needed a variance for the length of the roadway. We would have need, I think it would have been less lots. We wouldn't have had these two, obviously, here at the time. And I think there was a lot width issue for the right-of-way because it kind of tapers a little bit. It's not, you can't really see it on here, but we needed to still provide the 50-foot right-of-way and then provide some room for a buildable lot on the other side. And it was, I know it was within inches, but regardless, we had to get a variance for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, guys. No more comments? So then, this is still an open public hearing, so now's the time where we are taking comments from the public. If you come up, please. Just give us your name, address, and then comments.
Bill Carney, 101 Middleton Place. I haven't been able to make the previous hearings, but I did watch them online. And I know the builder's representative had mentioned that, you know, that the cul-de-sac would be consistent with what we've seen in town. I think he said there are 11 or 12 cul-de-sacs within the town of Eastchester. Obviously, you guys know better than anybody, Eastchester is a big town. If you look at the really existing area, you know, Bronxville Manor, there's only one cul-de-sac in all of Bronxville Manor, which I think is Pine Circle, and it obviously exits onto a main street, which is Ridge. If you do look at the existing area, I think there are four or five cul-de-sacs off of Highland. So if you're going to look, you know, to be consistent with the neighborhood, really, it's more consistent with coming off of Highland. And I appreciate Mr. Mark talking about, you know, looking into the entrance to Highland because I really think that's where it, where it should be. You know, Beach is a narrow street that can barely handle the traffic that's there now. I think we can all agree that doubling the amount of houses there is not going to improve the traffic situation. And it's definitely not a, you know, a through. It's not like, you know, cutting down Crawford or cutting down Highland. It's not a, the traffic issue is not a, you know, a cut-through issue. It's really just a density issue. On top of that, you know, seven of the eight houses there are going to be in Eastchester schools. I think only one of them is going to be Tuckahoe schools. Currently, no buses for Eastchester come through Bronxville Manor. I believe all of the houses in Bronxville Manor are Tuckahoe schools. So by putting this cul-de-sac in there, you're going to have an Eastchester bus, in addition to the Tuckahoe buses now, coming through there every morning and every afternoon. And again, you know, Beach is a very, very narrow street, so you're going to have buses coming down there. It's only going to add to the congestion. You know, even the traffic study, if you saw that, there was significant traffic off of Highland Avenue. And the, I would assume that you're going to want to put an entrance to a cul-de-sac where there already is existing traffic. And, you know, the increase, if you look at it on a percentage basis, the increase in traffic, if you had the entrance on Highland, would be minimal. But if you look at it again on a percentage basis with the increase in traffic off of Beach, it would be pretty significant. You know, we talked about striping and speed signs to help with the traffic issue. If the entrance is on Highland, you don't need to do any of this. There isn't going to be a traffic issue because there's already significant traffic on Highland already. You know, as a resident of Bronxville Manor, the last thing I want to do is create a traffic issue where now we have to put in striping and speed signs and everything else. It's, you know, it's not an area that really is built for that. You know, I understand the developer has the right to develop the land. It's his property. And I understand that, you know, he has the right to develop it, but I really think it needs to be responsible development. And, you know, inventory in Bronxville Manor is very low. You know, it's a desirable area. Houses go on and they sell really quickly. Despite the fact that the houses will be Eastchester, you know, you're going to be able to market these houses as Bronxville Manor. And I think that's one of the reasons why, if you have the entrance on Beach, you're going to be able to market the houses as Bronxville Manor. If the entrance is on Highland, they're not going to be able to be marketed at Bronxville Manor. So I really feel that, you know, we shouldn't take into account, like, where, how you're going to be able to market the houses. It really should be what's best for the area. And I really think that, you know, I'm asking the board really to investigate more so, looking to have that entrance on Highland. And if there are variances, you know, investigate if we're able to approve those variances and kind of weigh the pros and cons of the benefit of having the entrance on Beach and then, you know, as versus Highland. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. This is Frank Egan. I live at 210 Beach Street, the dead end. I guess, based on listening to all this, the eastmost end of Beach Street. First, let me just say, I couldn't agree more with the prior speaker. Everything he said is absolutely correct. Because after listening to the project the last month and everything that was said again tonight, it all of a sudden, I realized that this is the same arguments and issues dealing with congestion and density that happened back in 1985, when the property that my house is located on was first developed. There was 1.75 acres that was sold by the Cywinoy Golf Course to a developer, a man I wound up working with because I bought one of his houses. And he had originally proposed, I believe, six houses. Three that were supposed to come in on Barbara Place to either extend what was a dead-end or a smaller cul-de-sac, and three that were going to be built on a cul-de-sac at the east end of Beach Street. Both, according to the developer, the planning board rejected it, and the zoning board changed the zoning on the lot to one, to half-acre zoning. So the 1.75 acres got turned into three homes. Two whose driveways are on Barbara Place, and one, mine, that's the dead-end of Beach Street. And that was because of the impact of congestion and density on the neighborhood. So what was a bad idea then, and was changed by the wisdom of the boards, why would that be a good idea now? I just don't see that. For everything that's been said by my neighbors, please reconsider. And if, I understand that the developer has a right to develop his property, as I learned from the gentleman who built my house. But you've got to think of the community and do what's best for quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. John DeBattello, 19 Stebbins Avenue, President, Bronxville Manor Association. Just want to thank you guys for always doing this because I've been here like two months and I don't want to be here anymore. I don't know how you guys stay all these hours. Can I put up some pictures?
Sure. There's clips on there. You can.
Thank you. I just want to, I'm a professional firefighter for 29 years for the town of Eastchester. I'm a captain, currently a tour commander. So I live in the real world. Engineers are good. Everything's good. But when things go wrong with everything you build, I get the call at midnight. You know, storms, drains, things that don't work. You know, I've had, did every storm here. I'd almost killed me. A lot of wet underwear nights. But, so when they go to the fire department, you go to Captain Pintavale and to Fire Prevention. And, you know, they do, you know, everything's math with the truck radius, this and that. In a perfect world, I'm in suppression. I don't deal in a perfect world. So there's always a car where it's not supposed to be. There's always a FedEx truck coming out. There's always an Amazon vehicle. There's always, your kids go to Waverly, right? We had so much trouble with Waverly because you're not supposed to park there every day. We got to get through. We got to get through. So that over here is the minivan. You can't, it's tight. It's 21, 22 feet. Paper, everything's great on paper. Not going to work. Not going to work. You can't get this way. The apparatus are getting larger and larger. This is, it's the real world. These pictures, I can't put it, you know, in any other simpler way. We could talk, we could have a five-minute answer turn into a 20-minute answer, which, you guys are very educated. I'm very happy you have degrees and everything, but it's things, some things work, some things don't work. Not going to, I don't feel comfortable trying to get apparatus in that street. These are my neighbors. If I can't get to someone, someone dies, I don't sleep at night. You know, I take this very seriously. Like you said, even with the water, you could do all your drains, all your, the rates. The storms are getting worse and worse. The 100-year storm is now every six years, all right? It's the velocity of the water. The water's coming down faster. Everyone's have to redo their calculations and put more drainage. So just, it's not working on Beach. If you're going to do it, it has to be sensible development. It's going to be, less houses going off on Highland. Thank you.
Yeah, if you want to leave them with us, we can put them in the file. Mr. Chairman, just a clarification. The gentleman that was just up here, he, I'm sorry, do you work for the fire department? You remember the fire?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
29 years worked for the fire department.
Okay. So my, I guess my question is for clarification. Are you, is this an official position of the fire department or is this your own personal position?
No, this is, this is townie points. So when you live in Eastchester, you accumulate townie points. I'm a resident and I'm a lifelong, you know, resident since 1973. I care about my community. So, no, I appreciate that.
So-
So I have, that was a training.
If you could just address the board. So maybe-
Yeah, so that was a real-world training evolution. So the trucks went to Beach Street like they do all the time because we're always, you know, we have 4,4,700 calls a year. So that's-
But were you asked to go and do that little study and take those pictures in regards to this application? Or you were just on the street and you figured, wow, there you take the-
No, that was my, my training. That was my, my idea to go there because I am very concerned.
No, no, I hear you. But I guess as far as, we understand that, as far as comments from the fire department, you guys do that through another- Right, right. That was, we did not, that was not, the fire chief did not-
Yeah, whenever you guys do plans, you guys send everything to Fire Prevention. And, you know, there's, there's your protocols, and you get everything on paper. But it doesn't come, so here's, here's paper.
I understand what you're saying, but I think the question is, did you coordinate, coordinate that with fire prevention so everybody had an opportunity to go out to the site? Fire prevention, someone who's on the street like you are, with that perspective, so everybody can-
No, I kind of know.
That was the question that was raised by the board.
That's fine.
No, I didn't, I just, that was just my preliminary, but I could, if you want to meet, we could all meet, call Fire Prevention.
Right. So in further discussions, we will use your pictures to bring up the fire department and say someone was-
No, we could, yeah, we could, I'll give you my schedule, the days I'm working.
Bring you on board then. Okay. Thank you.
Magdalena Mancuso, 192 Beach Street. I'm on the corner of Beach and Rose. I have to say, the fire department has been at my house many times. I have two boys. And it is really, really tight. When they're there and the ambulance, nothing else really gets through. Couple of questions. One, is the property going to be private? I know the other cul-de-sacs are private. We cannot go in. Not that we need to go in, but just a question.
Yeah, can you finish your questions and then we'll-
Sorry?
Can you direct your questions to us? I'll write them down and then we'll go back to the applicant and answer them. So the first one, private.
Is the property private? Also, just a comment. If you notice, if you're aware of the houses on the corner of Beach and Rose, for example, mine and the few other ones, we all have these massive rocks surrounding our property. And that's purely for the traffic because I can't tell you how many times people try to cross our lawns. You, on cars, in cars. So that's just a little snippet of how the traffic is on our street. It's literally not great. I work three to four days out of the week from that corner office. Between the delivery trucks, the Amazon maybe probably 10 times in an hour just delivering, there's just so much traffic. I don't agree with the analysis that was done because it just seems a lot more than what was calculated. I mean, I'm ready to start documenting when I'm working to see how many cars drive by, but it just seems a little tedious. I don't know. It's, I worry about the kids. There's a lot of children on that, all around. I think in general, in that corner lot area that I live on, there's about 15 children that live. We're lucky that we've asked for bump speeds in the past, and that has been declined. So this has been an issue. Traffic has been an issue for many, many years. So this is just not going to make anything better. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, someone respond to the question about, is it private or is it, I don't even know how they characterize these.
The proposed cul-de-sac is designed to town standards and will be offered for dedication to the town of Eastchester. That's why we're allowing for the parking on the leg of the cul-de-sac coming in.
Oh, so you-
That would be available for public parking. It's a public street. Yes.
So you build it and then you dedicate it to the town?
Typically, that's how it's done with the cul-de-sac.
Right, with the cul-de, so what are the ones that do say private? That's just a sign? That's sort of meaningless or?
That's usually more, that's more of like a communal driveway kind of a situation. But if there's going to be a homeowners' association and there's going to be street parking, typically, the developer will build the street or construct the street and then deed it or dedicate it to the town, and then it becomes a public street.
Oh, so the private ones, they're responsible for maintenance of the street?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for being here and listening to everything that people have to say because I think it's very important. It's great to have numbers on a page and do analysis, but when you actually live it and you see it, it's not just numbers on a page. So my two areas of concern, and I've talked about this before, so I'm not going to belabor it, but it's, again, infrastructure and traffic, that 30% deficiency on the, that variance that is being requested for the intersection. 30% of the lot. It's not someone adding a couple square feet to their kitchen, all right? We've talked about the turning and the different areas where the streets are narrow, the streets are wide, they go into narrow streets. It's a lot. You're going to have the 30-foot wide street opening into a 22-foot wide street, and then you're going to have a new driveway, and then our driveway, oh, I'm sorry, did I say? Rosebrecher 205 Beach Street, so I'm right next door. So within that short amount of time, that short area, then you're going to have Cywinoy. So you don't have a lot of room, 100 feet, 108 feet, not a lot. That's not a lot of room, especially when we have these narrow streets. Question, I have a question on the sanitary sewer. So in the report, and Mr. Tramelli talked about there being existing capacity in the, in the lines for the sanitary sewer. Most of the houses in this neighborhood were built in the 20s and the 30s, so I'm assuming that that's how old the pipes are. So my question is, when is that checked? We talked about looking at the sanitary sewer and seeing the condition of it. Is that checked before approvals go through? That's something that should be done before approvals, not after, oh, jeez, we don't have good condition on these sewers. We're going to dig up the whole street and replace the sewers. So I think that's something that needs to happen before we actually- So, I think that's something that needs to happen before we actually move farther ahead with this because the pipes are a hundred years old. And I don't know what, you know, I, we have one of the old houses and there's always something that needs to be fixed. So, I can't imagine the pipe in the ground that is a hundred years old doesn't need something that there isn't some kind of leakage at this point. Adding eight more, I'm sorry, so that would be the six houses that would be added to the Beach Street side and the others to the other side. So, that's six more houses. There was also, again, this is a question. At some point, there was a discussion about lots one and two having extra pumps that would take it into that water management system. I didn't hear that discussed tonight. I don't know if that's something that's still in the process, that because those two lots have less drainage, that that was gonna be a backup to the pumps pumped into that water management system. But I didn't hear that talked about tonight, so I don't know if that's still, that's still in the process. I'm concerned about pumps. Pumps fail, power goes out. People have generators, you can't get fuel. We all had that experience during the pandemic. We couldn't get fuel. Your battery dies during Sandy, we lost power for five days. I'm not going back in the basement scooping out the, the sun pump again. I don't wanna do it every time there's, there's a little bit of rain. What's the backup plan for that? What's, what's gonna happen if that, if that happens, right? The other issue is the traffic. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, one more thing. The homeowners association that's gonna maintain this giant bathtub that's supposed to drain into the rest of the property, which, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have type D soil in this area, which is the worst, thank you very much. So, that the thought that this water that is going to be captured and then slowly move out into the rest of the property, I know where that water's going. It's going downhill, right into us, okay? That's where it's going. We already have a problem. I'm, this is not gonna make it any easier. I know, well, we're managing the water. Well, what happens when something goes wrong? What's, what's the homeowners association? Who, who's responsible for that? Who's in charge of that, okay? That, that I can't see working. Traffic, the accident report is a three-year look back starting at three sixteen twenty-twenty. Does that sound like a good date to anybody? That was, we had a year and a half of pandemic where there were virtually no vehicles on the road. So, my suggestion is to go back another couple of years and see that accident report. Not that I'm hoping that there were accidents back then, I hope that there weren't another five, three or five years back. But that, that, to me, that analysis is inadequate. It's one of those like sports statistics that has an asterisk. We can't really talk about that year and a half, right? That doesn't really qualify in the traffic study. The other thing in the traffic study is there's mention of a limited left-hand turns out of the proposed street. I don't know why that's an issue, why that's a thing, why there would be limited left-hand turns. I would think they would be the same either way. Yes, to the right, you would go out to the main road, but to the left is where the school is. That's how you would travel to school. And we have a lot of traffic that comes up and down Siouxsie and Beach at that corner for students, teachers, staff, whatever it is, they come that way, they make that turn. So, I don't know why there's, that, that's a phrase in there that there's a limited left, why that's just a statement, why that, that's assumption. And again, that's another thing that is difficult because we have the variance requested for that thirty percent deficiency. So, that makes it even worse. I think we have a good zoning code. I think we should stick with it. I thought that the suggestion about bringing the street in from Highland is a good suggestion. You might not get eight houses then, maybe you'll get five, maybe you'll get six. But to put eight houses here with the water issues we have, with the traffic issues we have, I don't think it's quality development. Thank you.
There's, there's one thing I, I want to address for those watching at home in terms of like a legal issue. When you're talking about sticking with the zoning code, I think that is a misleading statement in the sense that this is not a question of there's the law and if something is, when it comes to zoning, something can be at variance with the law. It doesn't necessarily mean it's illegal. And what happens is the applicant has the ability to address the zoning board for a variance of the law for something. One of the things that's been suggested tonight, for instance, was flipping the development around to the Highland side for the, for the entrance. From what we've heard, that would involve variances of the law as well. So, the, whether or not there's a variance and whether or not it's reasonable is something that the, the zoning board, it, it will address. But the fact that a variance is requested in and of itself does not necessarily mean something wrong. It's, it's something that the zoning board considers based upon a number of factors. I just wanted to clarify that for those watching at home.
Yes, 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 thank you, I, yes, understood. I, I don't have a problem. I, I, I understand your point. I, I think everyone's entitled to request the variance, but some variance are more of more quality than other variances. So, that's what I feel, that from the other direction, maybe that we won't have so, so many issues that we have on this side.
So, just to piggyback on that, what we do here is we examine the applications that are put forth before us. We examine everything, all the documents that are sent. We don't make recommendations about doing it another way. We say if what is submitted meets the requirements. And if there's another way to do it, that's not our purview to do. I guess it's, we have to deny the application or say we can't send you on to the, the next step along the way. But if everything that's presented in front of us makes sense, then it's our obligation to act on that, not, not the possibility to be something else.
Oh, no, no, not to redesign the project. No, yeah, we understand that.
And all the things you said, actually, how did we go about this? Because there's like eight questions there and I'm writing them down and like, and I think we have answers to all of them, but I'm not even gonna attempt to make answers and I don't wanna just brush it off. Can she contact you directly and just you sort of say on this drawing, it's the answer is about the, the, as you said, lots one and two and the drains? I think you, you probably have some misunderstandings of the information that's presented and I'm sure they could be clarified.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
Okay, so I'll follow up with an email to you.
I can make, I could make an attempt. I'll probably mess up half of them, but I think the, the information is out there and if it's not, we'll let you know.
Okay, okay, great.
Do you mind?
Thank you very much, thank you.
If I close this, will bad things happen? I need, I need some stowage space, maybe you put it underneath this? I'm Richard Svalenko from Turner B Street. I apologize in advance tonight because unlike in the past, I'm gonna be reading notes to ensure the fullness and the accuracy of my remarks. As a result of the two or three Beach subdivision application process and the planning board interactions, we have followed, we have the following nine major findings, which I'll refer to as what we know now, or what we now know. Number one, applicant does not own all the property needed for development. None, one ninety-five Beach Street, Beach's property will be encumbered but for the purpose of a different landowner and for a different land use and whose value utility of this potentially buildable subdivision lot will be diminished. He has no building on there, it's about exactly fifty feet that he would have. You are asking to take a piece of, for the radius that would be necessary. Number two, the development would be very substantially out of character for the neighborhood. I don't think there's any question. Number three, the density of the resulting cul-de-sacs would be unprecedented in Eastchester. As was previously, previously illustrated and provided to the board, the one exception is a section of Taco Avenue that abuts a commercial district and a traffic light. Yet that section on Taco Avenue still has significantly more green space than the result after the development of the two or three site. There is a reason he shows a very tight aperture on the cul-de-sacs of Eastchester. You pan out such as the graphic I provided, you find no instances of this kind of density. Number four, much of the high water table, flood-prone, one point one acres of the now permeable ground at the site would be covered with impervious surfaces such as a road, eight drivers and eight foundations. The site is on a downhill grade, we've heard a lot about west to east tonight. The velocity of the current trend reigns over Holmes' attempts to cash, capture, especially when a grade is involved. That is an observational, observational fact that we're all currently living. A shared bar neighbor on Deerfield with the plumber on Speedell, a grade with downpour spells flooding. Yesterday, I heard a story of a loss of a fire command vehicle and nearly the fire department captain's life in a massive flood of aisle. Hundred-year storm designs are not suited for the coming century, only the last. Number five, the DTS traffic study report is accurate and misleading. There is a page one of the two or three Beach Street traffic response memo to PB Planning Board PDF. There's a quote, "More than a sufficient number of traffic counts have been performed. However, proof of substantial traffic study misrepresented was provided to the board yesterday, for example. The morning peak hour has been reported to be measured and documented at twenty percent higher than that in the report. You have video showing it, it's not an extrapolation." And you can see the quality, the, the only breakout, it was asked earlier in the presentation about the, the chart, that's the, the bar chart, stacked bar chart. The only differentiation, differentiation being provided is how many trucks, how many cars. That was provided for the board in, in the analysis as well as how many pedestrians, how many strollers, how many dogs, all of them permeating the roadways virtually at all times and all, all days. So, the morning peak was documented on two videos for you and provided links to. One day was seventy-nine, one day was seventy-eight, two successive days, middle of the week, clear as a bell, exactly is what the secret guidelines would ask for. And they both were more than twenty percent higher than the highest rating, the highest measurements of the DTS report. It's been noted that you don't do it around a holiday period, that is obvious, it shouldn't have to be pointed out. And there's no reason, no, and it's never been reproduced on that Beach and Siouxsie intersection at seventy-nine other than two days right after Thanksgiving. Further, the peak PM hour appears to start early than the three PM time, which was used for all of the studies made on the Beach-Siouxsie intersection, excepting the follow-up March twenty-first, performed in response to residents' comments about school time versus study times. And it was spoken to by both representatives on the, the consultant and, and the producer about, there was a, a study done on the twenty-first at that intersection, it started at one-thirty, not anything in the morning, and that came with a high of forty-seven. Yet, today, looking at the traffic from the same intersection, and a video link will be provided for you when I get home or, or tomorrow, sixty cars were counted. I didn't break how many, how many trucks were, but there was a fair number of them, sixty vehicles, including a significant number of trucks. So, I had also provided earlier one of fifty-three cars from Mon, from Tuesday. So, everything being measured is in excess, significant excess of what DTS has presented to the board and is saying is more than suitable for the purpose of planning. The chairman has spoken a few times and questioned a few times about the, what is the foundation or the, or the composition of a, of a traffic study or, you know, is it just the counts? And I think the response back was with a lot of words, yes. It's, it's a breakout of the types of vehicles and how many. That's what, what we're worried about. Of course, and, and there was a very astute comment, I guess it was Mark who made that comment about, it's not the right thing?
Louis, Mark is not here.
My bad.
It's a good comment, I'll take it.
So, Louis had made about, you know, is there any, you know, standards guiding, you know, how we look at the adequacy with pedestrian traffic and so forth? It's, in this area in particular, it's a huge question. And the fact of the matter is a, 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 a simple study of, of the nature of DTS was, is not giving any color to the danger of these pedestrians and how many, how well they're populating the, the, the roadways. You can scour the reports and get no feel for what's going on. You look at that video for ten minutes and you're going like this. I provided to the board pictures from just one day, this past Tuesday, Tuesday the twenty-fifth, of just some screen captures as I was processing the video of, look at this, here's a kid wedged between a parked car and an accelerating car. Here's another one where there's the parked car, accelerating car, and here's a kid jumping on the, on the, trying to get on the curb. Here's a stroller in the same situation. Here's a large commercial truck, a dairy truck. Why does it have to get there? There's a school. There's only a couple of ways in and out of this place. Bronxville Manor is kind of an island and it's gotta get serviced. There's hundreds of kids, they're, hopefully drink their milk for solid bones, you know, things like that. Continuing on. Another, another traffic study is found in response to my comment from last meeting. And the comment was in the minutes, I took it from the minutes of the three twenty-three planning board, my comment was, as it is transcribed, "The only intersection that's of consequence really here is Beach and Siouxsie. That's where everything is happening. All the traffic studies should be focused on that." Page four of the two or three Beach Street traffic response memo to planning board Colliers at, it was of four nineteen. "At the previous hearing, a resident asked about the traffic volumes on Rose Avenue at Beach Street." So, they went and measured Rose Avenue, Beach Street, who cares?
That was actually raised.
Okay, I, maybe, maybe that's my bad. I, I, I read through the, the, the minutes and I thought that was a response to, to mine. I'm like, wait, that's not the intersection. Okay, I'll take that as a, as a pointer. And then DTS measured Rose at the seventy-nine period, but coming back to my comment of a moment, what? The only seventy-nine period measured over that critical intersection of Beach and Siouxsie is Thanksgiving, two days right after Thanksgiving. Point number six, there would be insufficient distance from the cul-de-sac center line to the Siouxsie center line. Page three of the traffic response memo, Colliers Engineering, two or three Beach Streets Sub, the PDF, item number four, the low peak hour traffic volumes, which will be generated at the new cul-de-sac, and here my emphasis, will not creating the left-turn conflicts for the vehicles on Beach Street, turning either into the cul-de-sac or turning into the Siouxsie Boulevard. And from page four of that same memo, there would be no conflicting left-turn movements between Siouxsie Boulevard and the proposed cul-de-sac, which is a key consideration, his words. That Siouxsie intersection supports three schools within four blocks and is teeming with pedestrians, dog walkers, baby strollers, scooters, bicycles, et cetera, all of which were documented on several videos posted on YouTube with links which have been provided to the board, noting, "I have discussed and illustrated before as, as many as seven cars a minute pass this proposed site and existing intersection, which is before the addition of a subdivision and new intersection. The new cul-de-sac left turn will have, will have cars merging and entering just before the Siouxsie intersection stop sign. At the intersection, there's near constant traffic in both directions at peak times. These new homes will be traveling peak times like everyone else too. Therefore, the preceding assumption is questionable. There will be, quote, 'There will be no conflicting left-turn movements between Siouxsie Boulevard and proposed cul-de-sac.'" And yes, my yes, his quote, "It is a key consideration. There will be conflicts." Point number seven, Bronxville Manor residents will have increased traffic on a, on a central, already chaotic, chaotic and dangerous road. There will be no additional outlets for existing amount, there will be no additional outlets for the existing amount of traffic plus new traffic and new traffic patterns. Thus, the risk of injury or mishap, mishap goes up from an already high level. High risk of injury or mishap, says who? In total quality management, TQM, it said, it says, quote, "The person closest to the process best understands the process." In Six Sigma, in Six Sigma Statistical Process Control, SPC, quote, "Corrective actions should only be in the responsibility of the person closest to the process. Under both quality systems, I am the one who best understands the road and the spot. I am the homeowner across from the site for ten years, the one who's observed..." I am the homeowner across from the site for ten years, the one who has observed that road and that spot for the most recent ten years, its use, condition, hazards. No one has more current understanding of the road and that spot than me." To help convey the already high risk of injury and mishap, illustrations for the board were provided using a one-day sample termed, quote, "Haring illustrations from a simple sample yesterday, 4/25/23." Point number eight, "Existing homeowners are likely to have multiple new signs placed on their properties." I think we heard a lot of desire for signs that won't help today, in a response to how can we make this development help the, the traffic that's already bad, and he just didn't want to say, there's no way it's going to be worse. Yeah, you could put a bunch of paint and so forth, make the neighborhood look like the Bronx or something, but it's not going to change much. There's reasons it is the way it is. So, part number one. Page four, Traffic Response Memo, Colliers Engineering, two or three Beach Streets Subdivision PDF, quote, "We note the applicant should consider and discuss the board's potential additional signing, i.e. stop sign ahead, signing on the Cyano Boulevard and the Beach Street eastbound approaching the stop signs. The stops on his head," my words now, "the stop sign ahead is necessary due to the fact that many drivers whizzing through do not obey traffic signals, some of which was documented by DTS themselves, as was quoted in my email yesterday to the board." This is probably why there's a head-on collision in that intersect, there was a head-on collision at that intersection. And I note there was a serious head-on collision of a school bus yesterday in Westchester, which rings bells for me. Part two, page six, two or three Beach Streets Traffic Response Memo to Planning Board, quote, "No parking permitted on the south side of the Beach Street. That area directly across from the site roadway for the truck, fire truck turning movement into the site." More on emergency access in a moment, but so it is now suggested, conceived, signs that need to be added to the lawns of the houses on the south side of Beach Street are for both, stop sign ahead, a Cyano east side placement as well, no parking signs, presumed at least two. Noting that the utility poles are on the north side of Beach. Also note that pedestrians often try to escape oncoming traffic by jumping on Beach, South Street, south side lawns, as this would be a new impediment to safety of the curb Number nine, "The department leadership has expressed significant concerns about the site's emergency apparatus accessibility." We heard it tonight. That concludes my remarks. I will forward a copy of the underlying document from which my remarks came to the board for future reference. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello there, my name is Danado Vacaro, I'm at 40 Deerfield Avenue, which is just around the, I'm not on the street like many of the, my neighbors are, directly in front of it. But I appreciate a lot of what they have said. Mine is going to be much shorter, actually, my, I had some notes, but my battery went out, so I'm just going to have to put my memory, but, and I'm really, I'm going to keep it short. Because I feel strongly that, you know, most of what they said, I agree with, and I just want to add a couple of things to it. I walk, I walk the neighborhood a lot, like almost every day, I'm walking the neighborhood. And I just know that, that, that part of Bronxville Manor is especially tight, it's hard, when you're making the turns, as a driver or pedestrian, you have to be really careful about which, when you're making the turn. And it's been said a number of times that that is a consideration. But this is my main point. I, with all due respect to the engineers, I just feel like everything they've said about trying to, trying to convince us it could work, does not pass a sniff test. And I would, I would really heartily encourage anyone on the zoning board that is making this determination about its acceptability or not. I really wish you would just go there and spend like half hour just walking it, looking around, maybe simulating driving situations, and maybe having pedestrians walk around just to see it. Because I've seen it, and it just doesn't make any sense to me that you could have a road coming out onto Beach there. It just makes no sense. I know you can do tests and you can look at, you know, the two-dimensional drawings, but I really appreciated John's photo, because that actually made it really clear with the color photograph, like what happens on that street. But a video simulating what would happen if there was a car coming out of that cul-de-sac would be really helpful. So, I would just, I'm just, that's my main point, would be to really beg the people making this decision to take a real careful look at it in person, in front of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, seeing that there's no other public comments, I just want to reiterate that my client, the applicant, has gone to considerable expense to prepare detailed analysis on all of the major impact issues that you've been discussing tonight. They've had the opportunity to have them reviewed by your professional staff. We've met with your town staff, including all of the major department heads that provide input on this particular application. We feel that, given the, that, at least from my opinion, there have been no new issues raised at tonight's public hearing, that we would, again, respectfully request the opportunity to close the public hearing and for you to consider a environmental determination with respect to this application. Thank you.
Thank you. So, in general, separate from the comments, the next step is we make a secret determination on the site, right?
Correct.
It's that we can't move this on to the zoning board until we make that determination, one way or another.
Right, well, first, as a procedural matter, you have to designate yourself as lead agency, so you have to, that's the first one.
We're going to do that tomorrow.
For the negative declaration or positive declaration, determination of significance, you could do that today and keep the public hearing open longer, you could, you could still do that determination and still keep the public hearing open until next, the next meeting, if you wanted to. It doesn't, it doesn't force you to make a decision on the preliminary site plan at this time.
But we would have, in order to move it to zoning, we do have to make a determination on SECRE, right?
Right, but you would also have to approve the preliminary subdivision plat, which you don't have to do today. It's two different things, three things you would vote on, the determination of the lead agency, the secret determination, and then the approval of the preliminary plat.
So, just a quick question, so, you're going to approve the preliminary plat first before the variances are received? Was my understanding that you would conclude the environmental review, send us to the zoning board for the variances, and then we would come back? Just a point of clarification.
I believe you are correct.
So, you can do either, you can make a determination of a significance under SECRE, refer to the zoning board, have the zoning board process the application, have it come back and complete preliminary review, or you can make a determination preliminary subdivision approval, so the subdivision approvals in two processes, preliminary and the final. And you can make the grant of the variance a condition of the preliminary to be satisfied before final. So, you have flexibility to do either one. Make a determination on the preliminary subdivision, and then, as a condition of that, move to the zoning board, or keep the application hearing on the preliminary subdivision open, refer to the planning board and come back, which I think is what Mr. Smith was referring to.
Okay, but there's no way it can move to zoning without us approving one of those or make a determination on SECRE?
You must make a determination under SECRE in order for it to move on, then you have flexibility with regard to the subdivision determination.
So, it's about the secret determination?
Right.
Good. Because I'm not sure we're ready to do that just yet. I think there's, I think we have to consider all of the comments from the public, and we can't just ignore them. I know there's no information that's new, but I think on some level, we have to address the information that's brought up, and this can't go on forever, but I think we have an obligation to at least respond based on the transcript and come up with something that makes us feel comfortable with moving this forward. That's my personal opinion, or asking for some sort of cooperation from the applicant to, not remediate, but improve the situation. I'm not ready to, to make a secret determination tonight.
I just had a quick question, in terms of leaving the public hearing open or not, you had indicated earlier about contacting the fire department, about photographs and kind of investigating that further, is that something that you're considering doing? Because that might involve a factual
I, of course, but I thought that was already done, but you're right, based on what we saw tonight, it seems like it hasn't been done completely.
When you had made that comment about we should speak to the fire chief about what we've seen and how that
Based on what the gentleman showed us, we have to circle back and ask him, what is this? Is this part of your, about the parked car and everything, it's sort of, I thought it was addressed, but apparently it was not. So, yes, in addition to what I've just said about the comments from the public, there's other procedural items that need to be addressed also.
Yeah, my own concern is that we've, we've heard certain of the experts, the consultants get up and largely tell us that this is a manageable problem, that, that, that the issues can be overcome, and that's squarely at odds with what I'm hearing from the neighborhood. And, you know, while I certainly agree that I'd like more time to consider this, I think it would also make sense to have some sort of plan of action. What are, what are we looking to, what are the pressure points? What additional information do we need to inform ourselves to make the proper decision here? And it may be that, you know, nailing down this issue with the fire department might be one concern. But what else, I mean, because certainly, it's not fair to anyone to just kick this, continue kicking this can down the road. You know, we need to know, what's the plan of action?
Yeah, I think, it might have been what we discussed earlier, I think the conditions in the neighborhood are poor. Those are existing conditions, right? I think we all know that. We're not here to change existing conditions. Unfortunately, we can't. If you want to talk about existing conditions, there's another meeting you should probably attend to, and to bring these up. We're going to do the best we can, and like I said before, we're going to do the best we can to respond to the application that's in front of us, and that's the information that's provided. And then, as Mr. Nemec put forth, is there anything we could do to mitigate or sort of reduce the, the negative effect that additional cars may actually have on this, on the traffic conditions there? That's the most we could do right now, I feel, in addition to coordinate with the fire and all the other agencies involved. I mean, I think that might be the answer to your question, Mr. Nemec. I can't change the traffic patterns, all I can do is, is sort of do something to make things a little better due to the addition of the cars. And then also, but then also, we have to discuss the secret determination, does this change the character in neighborhood? Right, I mean, that's our concern, also, in addition to all the technical stuff. I don't think we've done that yet.
I also think you have to designate yourself as lead agency first.
Sorry?
Designate as lead agency first.
Yeah, I'm going to do that, I just wanted to get my two cents in. So, I mean, I think before we do anything else, and yeah, I'll certainly do this, that's the way I feel about it. Like, I'm not ready to say that this doesn't change anything.
Okay.
I mean, all the technical points about the utilities and that, I think we have a lot of information. I think it's about the neighborhood. Let me go further talk about that, I imagine. So, is that a direction, Mr. Nemec? I mean, there's, there is an endpoint, we have to sooner or later, we have to make a secret determination, we have to evaluate everything. I think we're also going to ask the consultants to, fortunately, Mr., I'm going to say your name all wrong, but, so I'm not going to say it all, I think we have to address all the questions, the nine points that he brought up, at least read them and sort of, I'd like to understand the difference, because we're all engineers here, and there's got to be some logical explanation that just I don't understand yet. That's all. That's what I'd like. So, that being said, public hearing remains open, right? And we come back in next month and continue.
Yeah, yeah, you have to keep the public hearing open until you, until you do the determination of significance for SECRE, so it has to stay open.
So, there's a little more fact-finding to follow up on. Can this wait, or should we just do this now to get it on the record?
The determination for lead, to designate yourselves as lead agency, you should do that today.
Separate from everything else, okay.
That's just a procedural thing.
Yeah, let's just do that, so we don't have to talk about it anymore. If there's any other questions or comments, guys, any other ideas?
Yeah, I have one question. Somebody brought up about the Eastchester school buses. Was everybody in touch with the Eastchester school district on where the children will be picked up, or the closest pickup spot to this location?
Yeah, I had talked about this at one of the hearings before, it's, it's something that you evaluate each summer, and they wouldn't know until they actually plot out where all children are, for what schools, and they look at, reevaluate everything each, each summer, so they don't give you an advance notice, you know, because they'll tinker with the routes, and it's appropriate, so we don't know where they would pick them up.
Yeah, did they mention where the closest stop is now? I assume maybe the closest would be Beach and Highland?
It's, I think it's at Beach and Highland, yes.
Yeah.
Beach.
I mapped it out, it's like point two-five miles from a house, so I assume they're going to have to send probably two to three buses in, because there are three schools, you know, as much as two to three, into the neighborhood then.
Could be one for the elementary, one for the middle school, high school combined.
Yeah, and wearily, too. Yeah. I just think that's something to consider.
Just my opinion about the school district and the
Hold on, sorry, people, sorry.
You can't offer comment unless you're at the mic.
Great, thank you. Right, my comment about the schools and the buses are all I'd like to know, I don't think the school district is going to give you any direction that you can rely on until the end of August.
The truth is, they're not going to know. They don't know the ages of the children that are going to move into those houses, they're not going to know their bus route to what's available, there are questions about special ed kids, which may be going out of district, or, in my other life, I'm an education attorney, there's a lot of factors that go into that, and you're not going to get that kind of an answer. There could be places that you may be more concerned about than others where a bus stop should be located based upon, again, the peculiar configuration and the turns of those, but in terms of how many kids, how many buses, you're just not going to know that.
Right, that's kind of what I was thinking, too.
Perhaps the school district would, would decide to create a stop or, or take into consideration a stop if there were provisions made in the plan to direct those kids to a certain area, perhaps some sort of a pathway.
That is something that can be, that is something that can be done, and based upon the way things work in Tuckahoe School District, as well as Eastchester School District, bus stops are somewhat flexible, you know, depending on issues involving safety and other issues. But in terms of, you know, one of the concerns that is being raised is just volume, how many buses, you know, scheduling and all of that, those are all questions that you're not going to be able to resolve at this, other than there's going to be more than there are now.
Right, and the, basically, the increase in traffic.
Is there going to be more than we have now? We don't really know, it could actually be the same.
Well, I mean, right now, we only have one school district in that area, you're going to have buses coming in from another school district in addition to what's going in and out of Tuckahoe, because someone's, if there's, Eastchester school buses are going to have to come into Bronxville Manor to access the homes along that road to pick up those children, or come in to get them, because their street, even though they live on the other side of the line, there's no access from Highland.
No access, yeah, right. That's four homes, I believe, right? So, four homes in the Eastchester School District would have to be picked up, or one, I think, is in the Tuckahoe School District.
Yeah, five in the cul-de-sac.
So, four in the Eastchester School District would have to, five, so five in the Eastchester School District would have to be picked up in Bronxville Manor.
But it's all subject to the assumption that there will be children that need to be sent to school.
Children, how many, their ages.
Under the assumption, it could be net zero. Under the assumption, it could be net zero, but we don't know, so we assume the worst, that there will be children. Okay, that makes sense. All right. Any other comments? Cool.
No, there's one.
All right, guys. One more comment from public, yeah, please.
Comment, just one question I'd like to clarify before the end of the evening.
That's a mighty, that's a big ask.
Frank Egan, 210 Beach Street again. What I'd like to clarify was, was, did the fire department say, or do we not know yet, that they had to have no parking in the cul-de-sac so that the, their equipment could go around? Because a lot of parking spaces
Parking in the circle is what I understood it to be.
That's what I understood. No parking at all in the circle on the street, which means then that the only parking available to these folks would be in their driveways, which might accommodate four cars, or out on Beach Street.
No, I believe the plan was cars could not park in the circle portion of the cul-de-sac. They could park in their driveways, obviously, and along the straight part of the cul-de-sac street before it gets to the circle.
Five additional spots along the street.
Six, yeah.
Okay. In early discussions, that seemed to reduce a great number of the available spaces, creating even more problems with parking, but thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thanks, everyone. Sure, Mr. Svenko, you got to come back. We know who you are, but the public has to.
Richard Svenko, 210 Beach Street again. I'm first conveying that is a request to do a mock-up with all the cars being parked. There's a high skepticism on the representations of what can park where. Okay, that's, what I wanted to speak to is simply, there's been the statement repeated a couple of times tonight, is there's no new information. We have new traffic studies, which you can look with your own eyes, you don't have to be a traffic engineer, you see, there's 60 cars here, there's four trucks, who are showing substantially more traffic than is being represented with the application. So it's, the new information is you have new traffic studies, and it says there's a lot more traffic than what was being told.
Traffic studies referring to the videos you've taken?
Videos showing the cars going to and from Beach Street Simonoy intersection.
So these are videos that you've taken, or is this a firm that's conducted a
No, no, this, this is a software-enabled motion detection. Every time a car or person passes, grabs, you know, for the time it senses the vehicle or the pedestrian. Then I took out anything that wasn't in the time period that, that was being represented with the count, turned up the speed a little bit because I don't want you guys to be bored, and then gave you a link.
So I'm going to have to defer to our expert, because I have a job during the day, and he's the one that's supposed to be doing it, but we appreciate it, so let him evaluate it rather than me.
I would appreciate that he did, because I think we can all agree, those are cars and they're passing.
I did look at it, it was, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify, my statement was that there wasn't any new information. I said there were no new issues. We've been talking about the same issues.
Did I misspeak?
Okay, and further to clarify, there was a statement made that there was inaccurate and misleading information presented as part of the traffic study. Mr. Dempsey is a licensed professional engineer. He has to follow a protocol, a standard. He met that, that was reviewed by Mr. Greeley, your own traffic consultant. So I think it's a little insulting to
Their professionals.
Get onto his character, because he followed what his engineering protocols require and has been reviewed by and approved by the towns engineer.
Right, point taken, thank you. No disrespect, man, Mr. Dempsey. Thank you. All right, guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, before we move to the next application, before we move to the next application, just so you know, we're going to declare ourselves, you might want to stick around, Mr. Smith. We're going to make, we're going to take lead agencies, we're just going to read that through if you want to stay before you run out.
Vote to designate as lead agency.
We're going to do that right now, if you want to listen to it or just watch it on the tape. Cool. So what am I supposed to read? Okay. Right, so this is a resolution declaring lead agency status for this application, 23-02 203 Beach Street subdivision. Wow, this is really legal. Stand by, guys. Whereas the planning board of the town of Eastchester is authorized under Section 9 C2 of the zoning law of the town of Eastchester to approve plots for subdivisions, and whereas on or about February 7, 2023, the planning board received an application for a proposed eight-lot subdivision on a 1.8 acre property with frontage on Beach Street and Highland Avenue located in the R5 and R6 one-family resident districts, and whereas the application was submitted with a full environmental assessment form, EAF, and the planning board determined that, determined the proposed action as an unlisted action in accordance with Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law and the rules and regulations promulgated thereunder at 6 NYCRR, Part 617, collectively, that refers to SEACRA, and whereas the planning board meeting on February 23, 2023, the planning board passed a resolution declaring its intent to become a lead agency in connection with SEACRA review and proposed action, and whereas a notice of intent to be lead agency was circulated to involved agencies on March 13 and March 20, 2023, and whereas no objection to the planning board assuming lead agency status has been received within 30 days of the circulation of the notice of intent now, therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby declares itself as lead agency for the review of this action under SEACRA. Do we have to vote one at a time? James Manano votes yes, Mr. Cunningham's not here, Mr. Nemec?
Yes.
Mr. Campana?
Yes.
And Mr. Giacobi?
Yes.
Cool, application approved. We're good? All right, we did something tonight, right?
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. We'll see you next month. Make a motion to adjourn the hearing also.
We're not adjourned.
To adjourn this hearing to your May meeting.
I'm sorry?
To continue the public hearing to your May meeting.
It remains open.
Right. Do you want to make a motion for that purpose?
Oh, to remain open?
Correct.
Move on, but we could do that. Yeah, so I make a motion to leave the public hearing on this application.
Grudgingly seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you.
Have a good night. Thanks, guys, thanks, everyone. Okay, is Pottery Barn here?
No, he wasn't able to make it.
Oh, that's too bad.
So he'll, he's asking to be moved to next month, to May. He apologizes.
Thank you.
Was it both of them, or Sephora?
Where's the next African?
Sephora's with that, Sephora's separate?
Sephora's here, yeah.
Oh, okay. So the next application, the next and last application is 23-03 Sephora 670 White Plains Road. We're hoping this can be a lot shorter.
Hopefully.
Good night, guys.
I think we got home limber.
Did we? Yeah, she's going to be done quickly. Can we just approve it now?
Good thing I got lunch. I almost didn't get lunch either. Yeah. That happened to me last time.
Oh, wow. That's like a full-scale mock-up.
Yeah, these are all mock-ups. I'm sorry, like I brought them in the car, so like, we've got a little bit of history, but
Can we ask Dina to expedite the transcript so we can all read it, all the comments?
We know what she did last time, and she just gave us the part, like, we asked if we could have it, like, just, sometimes she can just separate just, like, the Beach Street part, like, can you do that first? You know, we don't need the other
Yeah, sure, just so you have something to read as a reference.
Right, yeah, as soon as possible.
Yeah, so we have time to respond to it.
I'll email her tomorrow.
Yep.
That's a good idea.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Nicole from OLA, representing Sephora. Okay. So due to the need to value engineer the storefront after receiving beats that were much greater than the budget allowed, we were forced to make some updates to the approval, approved materials. We will hold the design aesthetics to the original approved storefront, but we will need to change the material from black metal apolic panels at the facade and black and white stone to now skimcoed stucco based with black and white paint, matching the design specifications previously called out. So after presenting to the ARB and hearing all their feedbacks, we decided to add two furouts, so the two bump-out columns of Sephora in the facade in order to give some depth. And we also added one-eighth reveal, so like a scoring type of thing, shadow gap between the, the white and black stripes to replicate the grout as previously portrayed. So I do want to apologize beforehand, so I did wanted to bring these mock-ups to show you how the, the scoring will replicate. Unfortunately, it was done by a third party, so the finish is not what is intended. It's actually intended to be a skimcoat. But I did wanted to bring them anyway to, to show you guys the, the scoring that is very important for the ARB. Saying that, which one is the one? With that being said, we did provide this one eighth, this one was the, the intended one, the intended design, but the GC did provide us with this one, which it looks a little bit more cleaner. If you can see here, this one is the one that we presented to the ARB. We didn't have the mock-up, but after looking at the mock-up, we can see that this one will look sharper and it will also look better from afar, so.
The deeper reveal is what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Is the, is it the same coat? It's just about the reveal that we're talking?
So the idea is always to have skimcoats, so, sorry about the finish, but it's not going to be the same finish. But the paint and the scoring, we actually prefer this one, that it's one inch at the widest part.
So although the two boards look different as far as color and maybe even the skimcoat, we would have to assume that that, that component's going to remain the same, it's just about the reveal?
Yes.
So could we just imagine that that one over there has deeper reveal? Is that what we're
Yeah, correct. I did bring some photos to actually show you the finish, so if you, I can bring it to you if you want, or I don't know if you can see it. In the touchscreen is better.
What are the photos?
Oh, can you show the photo, please?
I don't think he has the photos.
On the board.
On the board.
Oh, zoom in the board.
Right here.
Oh, it's over there.
Yeah.
Got it, yeah, he does have it. Yeah, could you zoom in on those, Gary?
Or I can also pass it to you if it's easier.
The bottom
The bottom one, that is black and white.
Yeah. Yep, could you zoom? Got it, thank you. Those look different coloration than what that is, right?
This, this is going to be the color of Sephora. This is, this is the actual color, like the black setting and the, I don't remember the color of the white, I have it over there.
So when, when your application was here previously, the, the first proposal was stone and glass?
Yes, it was stone.
Stone and glass. So now what we're doing is moving from stone and glass to an EPIS application.
Yeah. But that's why we did added the depth and also the scoring to give it a little bit more of shadowing.
Absolutely. Where's the, oh, it's in, hey, Gary, could you move to the storefront picture where it shows the Sephora, which is the actual, which one are we doing? The one on the right?
That one.
Yeah, that's it.
Those are actually some examples that we do, so I, I did wanted to show you that we do have
Someplace else.
Paint as a standard. Yeah, so it's, it's common, it's a common thing that Sephora brings. And the other one, please, the, the far And I'm sorry, I brought this.
So these are projecting from the face of the building, correct? They're projecting out from the face of the building?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So the two, the, the two columns are like four inches out.
Got it, got it. Okay. Is there any, is there going to be any sort of protection at the bottom of the, of the pilasters? The only reason why I ask is because the EPIS material tends to be, not brittle, but it dents easily.
Actually, yes. I do have the, the detail, we do have like a base of stone.
Got it.
If you want, I can show you. I, I did put it in the, in the plans.
Yeah, we have it here.
Okay. On the big package, actually.
What is the, what is the material that would be protecting the base of this? You said it was, it's stone?
I believe it's corian, the base is corian base.
Got it.
So I believe it's like eight inches, and then the EPIS comes on top.
To what height is it protected with the corian? Eight inches?
Yeah.
And above that, it's EPIS?
Uh-huh.
Is that going to get damaged? I guess that's your point, right?
That was my point of asking, yeah.
So as mentioned, we have done this in the past. It's something that, it's a standard for Sephora, it's not only the stone.
So was the stone that you were presenting, or the gentleman who was presenting the last go-around, was that a typical application, the stone, or was that specific to this location?
So before, to be honest, before the landlord's engine, landlord's architect presented, and the facade was going to be on the landlord. Some things went on in between, obviously, and now Sephora is the one doing all the work, which budget doesn't allow it anymore.
Yeah. Is it those two pillars?
It's these two pilasters. And they, you can see, but they project about four inches into the sidewalk area.
Oh, these?
Yeah, yeah.
Where did the middle?
The middle is actually recessed, so there's a covering. When you walk into the vestibule, before you get to the vestibule, there's a cover. And then, and then you go through the doors.
But you have no access to those, to damage those.
Right, so here, my only, my concern would be the EPIS is such a soft, dentable, you know, material, and this is a heavily trafficked area with baby strollers and everything else.
Corner guards on?
Right. I mean, it would, it would
I guess if they damage it, they have to fix it, right?
Right, so what are the, yeah, what are the protocols to maintain this if it were to be damaged? Does it all have to come off and be redone, or is it there, is there a process to, to patch those damaged areas?
I'm sorry, I, I don't really know that question. I'm assuming yes. Obviously, Sephora has a very high standard that they need to maintain, so I wouldn't believe that they will leave it like that.
Disagree with that.
Yeah, make up.
What's that?
You do make up, so.
Right. I mean, I'm not going to get involved in the maintenance of that. I kind of agree with that, but I'm not going to design it. If this is a standard you guys do, I'm okay with it, although there might be better ways to do with it. We, what do we do? We look at the application in front of us and don't recommend changes. Yeah, so I'm, I'm okay. You guys kind of I'm okay with it, although there might be better ways to do with it. We, what do we do? We look at the application in front of us and don't recommend changes. Yeah, so I'm okay. You guys got any other comments?
Nothing, it's fine.
Okay, even though it seems ludicrous, I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 23-03 Sephora 670 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Same motion to close this application, 23-03 Sephora 670 White Plains Road.
Close the public hearing.
Yep, that's what I meant.
Second.
Close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Cool. We're good with this? Yes, good. I make a motion to approve this application, 23-03 Sephora 670 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're good to go. Thank you.
Hello.
Thank you. And Pottery Barn, we adjourned. All right, sorry. I make a motion to adjourn the Town of Eastchester planning board meeting of Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 10:15.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Good.